What up everybody? It's good to see you guys. Got us a live show. Ready to go.
The Planning and Land Use Management Committee reports for items seventeen through twenty-one have been submitted and posted to the respective council files. The Civil Rights Equity Immigration Aging and Disability Committee report for item twenty-two has been submitted and posted to the respective council file. The Energy and Environment Committee report for item twenty-three has been submitted and posted to the respective council file. Items twenty-six through thirty-two are items which public hearings have not been held. Items thirty-three through forty-one are closed session items considered by the Budget Finance Innovation Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Very good. With that objection, member, those items are now before us. Are there any items that members would like to call special? Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item one special for comments.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Amen.
I'd like to call item ten for a brief comment before our vote.
Very good. Councilmember Park?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item twenty-five for remarks, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto Martinez?
Yeah, item twenty-two, you have an amendment that's been given to the clerks.
Okay, very good. Could the city attorney please read the amendment into the record?
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, you didn't miss anything. Just started.
The motion reads that I move that item number twenty-two on today's agenda be amended to adopt the following recommendation. Adopt the controller instructions included in the Community Investment for Families report dated November sixth, two thousand twenty-three attached to the council file.
Hi, Wayne.
Sorry, did you have a second for that?
I do. I think you seconded it.
Oh, thank you. I'll second that. Next.
Oh, nice mask, homie. You decided to wear one today, huh, for no reason?
Item twenty-four to be continued for one week.
For one week.
I mean, if his face is a little more wide, I don't know if he'd be able to fucking wear that thing. Stretching his ears out. Shit, yeah.
I think we're here on Tuesday?
Yeah, it just shows you who the ones are frightened. Don't realize that they have a immune system and stuff like that.
So continued until next Tuesday the fourteenth?
They're still waiting to flatten some curve of some sort.
That'll be the order. All right, are there any other specials? Councilmember Amen?
Their handlers told them something about a curve.
We would like to have a separate vote on item eighteen, please.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, I'd like to call item fourteen special for an amendment.
Ah, she wearing another one of them tulips.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Item six.
Item six?
Yes.
All right, is the amendment prepared?
Uh, yes.
Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read the amendment.
Yes, Mr. President. The motion reads that I move that item number six on today's agenda be amended to read as follows.
Dumb virtual signaling. I look at you as low IQ.
Deleon and Rodriguez.
Guess you just don't see it.
Designate the intersection of First and Lorena Streets in Boyle Heights.
Sell that person a bridge.
As La Plaza de Cinco de Mayo.
Dumb enough to buy it.
Two, direct the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to erect permanent ceremonial signs to this effect at this location.
Was waiting to get spanked, hold on.
Anything else, Councilmember Rodriguez? Is that it? Councilmember Hernandez, did you have something else?
They didn't want none of it, huh? They want to spank who they want to spank or whip. Who they want to whip.
Okay, I see no other specials. So, Mr. Clerk, what is available now for us to vote on?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items two through five, seven through nine, eleven through seventeen, and nineteen through twenty-one and twenty-three.
All right, those items are now before us, members. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's open the roll.
Let's close the roll.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Uh, I don't see him in there.
Very good, that brings us next to our closed session items. And I know all of these items thirty-three through forty-one have been considered by the Budget Finance Committee. Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the recommendations of the committee. And then, members, unless anyone has questions, comments, that you wish to take up in closed session, I would propose that we can take those matters up for a vote in open session. So, Mr. Clerk, please read the settlement amounts.
Thank you, Mr. President. For item thirty-three in the case entitled Bridget Baco versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in settlement. For item thirty-four in the case entitled Matthew Garza versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to one million eight hundred thousand dollars in settlement. For item thirty-five in the case entitled Diana Centeno versus David Lee Gallagher et al., there is a recommendation to expand up to two million five hundred thousand dollars in settlement.
Happy Wednesday, Kayla. It's a hot day.
For item thirty-six in the case entitled Francine Jensen versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expand up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in settlement.
Just woke up, had breakfast and all that stuff, so.
For item thirty-seven in the case entitled Domingo Juarez Mesa versus City of Los Angeles et al.,
I know it takes me ten, fifteen minutes to fiddle with them. I didn't have that time.
For item thirty-eight in the case entitled Oscar Casaneda versus City of Los Angeles et al.,
I went to sleep at like four o'clock in the morning yesterday after the show, listing cards after doing the show with you guys.
For item thirty-nine in the case entitled Julie Fernandez versus City of Los Angeles et al.,
I never even ate Pop Tarts as a kid.
There is a recommendation to expand up to three hundred thousand dollars in settlement.
No, I was never a Pop Tart gag.
For item forty-one in the case entitled Acclamation Insurance Management Services versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to three hundred thousand dollars in settlement.
Two pieces of wheat toast with a little butter on it, some coffee.
For item forty-one in the case entitled Isaac Casagano versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
All right, members, do any members wish to call any of those items special for purposes of having them heard in closed session? I see no requests to do so, so those items are now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Thanks, Kayla.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes? Hi, charm. What's up, model? Thank you again, Kayla.
All right.
Blueberry pancakes with peanut butter, is that what you had? Boy, you had a whole gourmet thing. I didn't have none of that. Just, like I said, some toast, a little butter.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if we could please go next to the items that were called special for separate votes that do not require public comment.
My mom bought a lot of wheat bread when we were kids, so.
Take those votes now as well. Which were the first of those?
Yes, Mr. President. The council may now vote on item six as amended by motion Rodriguez, Coria.
All right, that item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Not gourmet, frozen. Still more gourmet than what I had. It's scrambled eggs. Yeah, I would've made eggs, but I didn't have none. A lot of eggs, I need to go to the market.
Okay, that item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes? Not weed bread, wheat.
Is there anything else that we can take up before public comment?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Very good. That brings us next to our...
What's up, Mary?
Councilmember Amen, did you? Okay. That brings us next to...
I don't see him, tons. I was looking for him.
Our very important presentation today, members. It is a great honor for this council to be able to commemorate Veterans Day upcoming on November eleventh by recognizing some of the extraordinary veterans that represent, that have not only represented our country so honorably in military service, but who've come back to their communities and continued to represent our community and to serve others so well. And I want to thank all of you members for having selected and honoree from your district to come here today to represent so many other people that we could be honoring every day. And Veterans Day gives us the opportunity to do that. So, I'm going to ask first, before we begin, if you are a veteran of the United States Military Service, whether you are one of our honorees or not, and you are able to stand or raise your hand, could you please do so?
I believe Herman is a veteran. So, is Herman going to stand up? Herman standing up? Where is he? Oh, there's Mr. Spindler. I see him standing. There he is. Oh, he's back, Jack, after getting thrown out. He is back, Jack. So, let's see what's going on. Shout out to all the veterans, man. Big ups to all them.
Thank you very much. There was a time in years past when, if I had asked that question, most of the people in here would have risen.
That's right, Mike. Cry me a river to the sea.
The draft.
The kids. What about the kids? Bob, the kids. How's about that one, Mike?
Our gratitude to those who choose to serve when they weren't required to, but who made that decision to serve their country in military service is even deeper.
Cry me a river to the sea.
Incredibly grateful to all of you for your service. So, it's my great privilege to be able to begin our Veterans of the Year commemoration
Hey, Jeffrey, thank you so much.
By recognizing Councilmember Hernandez.
Oh, you got a Hudson's card? Oh, I'll send you some stickers.
The Veteran of the Year for Council District One.
You bought that card? I'll send you some stickers.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you for taking the lead on making this happen for our veterans here in Los Angeles. Good morning, colleagues. I'm very excited to be able to honor someone very special from Council District One. Our honoree from Council District One is Tom Atkins, who served in the United States Marine Corps and rose to the rank of Corporal by the end of his eight-year service.
Sad about the twenty...
Tom Atkins grew up in East LA.
Sad about the twenty US sailors that were hurt on rocket attacks from other countries, too. I'm sure you weren't sad about that.
Up in Greenspace with friends at Silicon Road Park. Tom Atkins is the chairman of the El Río de Los Angeles Veterans Collaborative, an organization dedicated to honoring the service and sacrifices of veterans and preserving their memories for generations to come. They also throw down and volunteer at a lot of community events and lead the organizing of them. He and other local veterans led the efforts in creating a Veterans Memorial at El Río de Los Angeles State Park. In addition, Tom regularly performs flag-raising ceremonies at El Río de Los Angeles State Park, at the Veterans Square in Highland Park, and at El Sereno Veterans Monime. It is important that we honor the generations of people who have served, and I feel so fortunate to have worked with Tom Atkins and El Río de los Veterans, and I've seen the tireless effort they pour into our communities.
McDonald's ain't sad. They're making billions more.
And his continued commitment to uplifting the veterans of our district and across northeast.
And what they've learned is getting rid of the dollar menu was the best thing they ever did in their entire career. They've made more money in the last two years than they have almost ever, so, yeah. They've learned that they can just push up the prices and people are still going to come. So, why not make the Big Mac eleven dollars? And you think the Big Mac's going back down to five? Good luck.
A sincere gratitude to Tom Atkins for all that he has done for our country and all he continues to do every single day for Council District One.
Better burger for less money.
Thank you, Tom. I want to present you with the certificate from the City of LA.
Less money, better burger, longer wait time. Granted, longer wait time. I'm not going to lie to you, but it's worth the wait. And now to save your money. Shit, we already got that now. Right now, it's ten dollars thirty cents for the Big Mac meal with no, like, you know, large fry or coke.
Veteran honoree of the year, Officer Antonio Canciola, whom I have had the pleasure of working with very closely on countless projects of benefit to the, especially to the youth of our district.
No, no, you're going to pay twenty dollars an hour.
Raised in Mexico.
It's your money. They raised the rent on you, boy. And you're paying for it. They ain't paying for it.
In his home state of Guanajuato made his parents fear.
I made it my mission to stop trying to go to these places. Last thing I'm going to do is contribute to people that can't even figure out how to put two items in a bag.
Commitment to service and desire to uplift people around him, which started and continues throughout his career until today. So, he joined the Navy in two thousand thirteen and spent ten years serving in the Navy and in the Naval Reserves. He received five Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals and Awards, including Outstanding Volunteer Service Medal for over five hundred hours of community service in just twenty-four months. He also earned the Gold Star in lieu of a second award for distinguished service.
Is that me?
And after serving in a variety of positions, including as Petty Officer, where he had a dual role as both a technical expert and as a leader. He was also a steelworker first class and served in many leadership positions in that role as battalion safety petty officer. He was most recently stationed in Port Huinimi after serving in Virginia, Florida, the Great Lakes, and Gulfport, Mississippi.
You're getting a better meal.
While he was serving in the...
Somebody, unlike us here, which is a little different than everybody else, the fact that you have to spend six-dollar gas to go anywhere, to get anywhere, you've already burnt another six, plus your time, it's like you can make a better burger at home that's actually hot to where you got to stop for a second. You can't just bite into it because it's that hot. Instead of getting the lukewarm burger that you're waiting in line for, burning gas doesn't even taste that good. So, yeah, you're better off getting the air fryer, making yourself some fries, and making yourself a hamburger at home and doing that, jammy. And not to mention the drinks, like, you know, I went to Jersey Mike's. The small regular drink is two thirty-nine. Two thirty-nine? That's crazy. I mean, man, at two thirty-nine, I can get a fucking, I can get a two-liter at the fucking market.
In two thousand eighteen, he was awarded the Life Saving Medal from the Police Department for preventing a distraught woman from leaving a twenty-two-story building.
Half soda anyways.
He's been the officer in charge of our annual Winter Wonderland, where he has helped collect and distribute over forty thousand toys to children in need. He organized the first citywide soccer tournament for LAPD's cadets, which allowed over three hundred young people, mostly young people at risk or from underserved backgrounds, to participate in this incredible, inspiring tournament. He's mentored youth individually. He's helped them to escape the gang life. He's partnered with our community organizations to help some of them transfer into private schools where they could have a better opportunity for education.
His dedication to his loved ones serves as a constant source of motivation.
Driving into excel in his role and make a difference in the community. He constantly is actively engaged with our community, and Antonio really not only believes in, but demonstrates the power of empathy and compassion. He was awarded the Community Relations Officer of the Year in his first year assigned to the unit. And he's currently our North Hollywood Division LAPD Youth Services Officer, where he oversees the Jeopardy and Cadet Youth Programs, as well as managing our Witsit Parks overtime teams.
Started off as a good morning.
And working to build strong community relationships. His journey from Mexico to the Navy to the LAPD really exemplifies the power of determination.
And really quickly again, for the ones who weren't here yesterday, guys, it's windy again here today. It's really windy to where SoCal Edison sent out over two hundred thousand messages to people saying that they're going to just shut the power off as the wind increases. So, if for some reason we just bomb and we're done, you know why? The power was shut off. You know, because again, when the Woolsey Fire, they didn't shut the power off. Winds knocked down some of the power lines, spread the fire even quicker, or started the fire possibly, allegedly. So, who knows? So, yeah. Motorcycle chase? No. No motorcycle chases. So, yeah, we may not have power. Who knows? Hopefully, we're all good. Like I said, I'd be here if it was on and we're here now.
Members, unfortunately, Councilmember Blumenfield could not be here.
Biggie Bag at Wendy's is five bucks. How's a Biggie Bag?
But I definitely want to take a moment to recognize him, because I know he's watching at home. So, it's a great honor for me to be able to recognize and acknowledge Council District Three's Veteran of the Year, Paul Lawler.
I ask you this, though. Check this out, though. What's going to happen when they push further into this full electrical shit with all the cars? People that just came home last night, they think, okay, well, I'm charging my shit, and then the power goes out, then you don't even have enough charge to get to work. What's going on? I mean, they couldn't see these problems? You know, we have rolling blackouts. They're called rolling blackouts, okay? We've had those for years, way before electrical car push, way before it. And now you have the Santa Ana push with the winds, okay? So, they're purposefully shutting the power off so they don't have problems with the power, starting more brush fires. So, yeah, man, it's, they're not thinking properly. I mean, they're idiots. These are low-IQ motherfuckers that are just bought and sold by the biggest bidder.
The community-serving organizations, including American Legion Post Eight Twenty-Six, where he's the vice commander.
Double spec, small fry, five nuggets, small drink, five bucks. That sounds pretty good. They must be losing the food war, Nanya. It's the only reason I can think. Now's the time to grab the customer base.
Tarzana Community and Cultural Center.
Cheapest one will win.
Founding Board members and the West Valley.
I mean, bro, I look at the fucking Little Caesars not far from my house now. It's like, it's crazy. Like, there's always five people inside of Little Caesars now, because they always have, you know, the cheaper pizzas, you know what I mean? The six-dollar pizza, whatever it is, you know? So, yeah.
For your service, it's an honor to recognize you as Council District Three's Veteran of the Year. And now I would like to call in Councilmember Amen.
Thank you so much, Council President, and I want to just thank you for organizing this presentation today. It's so meaningful to be able to recognize so many who have served our country. Today, I rise to recognize Council District Four resident BJ Lang as our CD Four Veteran of the Year nominee. BJ is a fourteen-year resident of Franklin Village, originally from St. Louis, Missouri. And his civilian career is a place where you might have seen him on MTV, Jimmy Kimmel Live, and The Rookie.
Jimmy Kimmel.
But he claims that his experience as retired US Air Force Reserve Medic set him up for success as a currently recurring paramedic on General Hospital.
Oh, he's on General Hospital.
Our nominee directly serves on the SAG-AFTRA Los Angeles Local Military Committee.
Glenn Allen, thank you so much, Glenn. You rock.
Artist Council for the Armed Forces Partnership.
Shout out to Carolina. Carolina. Thank you, Carolina.
And as a comedy coach for the Air Force Wounded Warrior Program, where he provides improv techniques and support as part of resiliency instruction to fellow wounded, ill, and injured service members and their caregivers. To me, when I learned about this, this was so meaningful, because it really shows the healing power of the arts and especially of comedy. He is a graduate of and an instructor at the Second City, as well as a teaching artist at the Geffen Playhouse, and he continues
Oh, the Second City. Remember I was showing you guys that place on Melrose?
By volunteering as an aircrew member and public affairs officer in Civil Air Patrol, the US Air Force Auxiliary, as well as a per DIEM clinical instructor at the UCLA Center for Pre-Hospital Care. I also want to share an extraordinary story of heroism demonstrating the values that brought him to service and the ways in which BJ continues to serve the City of Los Angeles. Last year, on June twenty-second, in Hollywood, he was involved in a murder. Not in that way. Mr. Lang sprung into action using his military medical expertise and removed a victim of gun violence from a car, performed an assessment and immediate nine-one-one coordination and CPR on the individual. Unfortunately, the victim did not survive, but Mr. Lang's quick actions and immediate response as everyone else on the streets fled away from a bleeding and dying man was not without notice or appreciation. He has certainly shown courage beyond what so many of us would have shown in that situation.
I guess they're not going anywhere. They've been there forever, right?
I really admire you and the work you've done. It is for these reasons and many more that our nominee was selected.
My mom used to watch General Hospital.
Congratulations to BJ, our CD Four Veteran of the Year nominee, US Air Force.
Always waiting for that shit to finish, so fucking, what do you call it? Spider-Man would come on, the cartoon. Jimmy Kimmel and his fucking best buddy, coward, stirrer, fucking commies. They're little vaccine commies.
It's now a pleasure to recognize representing Council District Five.
They're sexist, shoving his pigs, too, right? But we'll just push that to the side. I guess you didn't see the skit where he dressed up as Oprah, right? In a blackface, stepping on his maid. Literally dancing on the back of his maid, dressed as Oprah, blackface. And I'm guessing you missed the blackface of Carl Malone. Guessing you missed all that. God damn. Not to mention, his show's fucking stupid as fuck. Nothing's funny. He says nothing funny. You go to his show, his little applause sign says, hurry up, applause, laugh, come on, come on. No, 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 no. We need to harumph out of that guy. You clap now. Look, the sign says clap. You clap.
Since his time in the military, Dr. Frishberg has authored and co-authored multiple articles and reviews, eighteen book chapters, and three books.
I have.
And if that weren't enough, he's also dedicated himself to serving the community.
I've met Jimmy fucking three times. I didn't give a fuck any of the three. I was there to see my friends play.
Sponsor for LA's Food on Foot program. And he plays the saxophone, clarinet, and the flute in multiple community-based musical groups here in the Los Angeles area.
They're all bought and sold, lit dad.
Put us all to shame.
They're all bought and sold. They're all puppets of the machine.
Doctor Frishberg, thank you for your incredible coaching services to your country, to our city, and to your community. You've dedicated your life in service of others, and we are all so grateful. Thank you.
Shit, yeah, you got the real framed one, too. They didn't give him the fucking Opechii folder.
Thank you very much. Next, it's a pleasure to recognize representing the sixth Council District, Councilmember Imelda Pedia. Councilmember Pedia.
Ah, Pal Diaz up. Let's go, girl.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Council President, for leading this presentation in honor of our veterans, most notably veterans who have continued to service and support their communities from beyond the battlefield.
Makeuped up.
Today, I have the distinct privilege of honoring Manuel Rendon Jr., who has done so much for our country and our local valley communities. Manuel is a first-generation immigrant from the Philippines and a veteran in the United States Military. Immediately after high school, Manuel enlisted in the Navy as a hospital corpsman. He was later commissioned as a US officer within the Medical Service Corps branch. Then, he served as hospital administrator.
Oh, for sure, Nanya.
Following his service, his service in the Army, Manuel became a regional manager within the US Department of Commerce.
Come on, they all are, dude.
There, he was in charge of multiple survey data collections and data analysis in the state for the states of Alaska, Washington, and Nevada.
Some sort of curve to be flattened.
Today, Manuel Rendon Jr. has continued to serve by giving back to the community in many different ways. Currently, he supports fellow veterans who are in need through his work at the Goodwill SoCal Veterans.
Morons that they are, but I'll never let them forget it. Never.
The Veteran Peer Access Network Program, which is a part of LA County Department of Mental Health.
Not until I die. And then if I could come back and haunt you, I fucking will.
And their families here in the states. This program does amazing work connecting veterans to the resources they deserve as they transition back into civilian life.
Yeah, corpsman.
Through this network, Manuel brings his personal experience and hardships throughout his time as a student, a working professional, a first-gen American, as a veteran to advocate for those who work with other veterans in the community. Thank you, Manuel, for all of your years of bravery and service to our nation, and therefore, we want to present you this on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. And in partnership with our overlapping Congress member, Tony Cardenas, we also present you with this prize.
I'm no genius, that's for sure, but I get it. It's funny. I was smart enough, this idiot huffing out of the bag was smart enough to see through their bullshit.
Next, it's my pleasure to recognize representing the seventh Council District, Councilmember Monica Rodriguez.
Okay. Wait, you have doctors and nurses dancing on a video while millions are dying? Okay. All I have to do is come down and I'll get a free joint to take your fucking shitty, I'll get a free joint of shitty boof-ass weed, some mids to come take your shot? Okay, that sounds legit. Oh, you're bribing people with a lottery to come down and take your shit? That sounds legit. Moronic as fuck. And like I said, any of you dumb fucks who believe that, let me know. I have a beautiful bridge to sell you. It's COVID-free. It comes with a giant bridge mask. Yes, it's already got all its boosters, before you even ask, and I know you'll buy it because you're dumb enough. I know you will. I'm not asking, I'm telling. I know you're stupid enough to fucking buy it. So, let me know. Anybody want that bridge?
...that this individual does each and every day, not just in his previous service, but in his ongoing service.
Wraps around the whole thing, so the bridge will be nice and safe.
Andre Andrews is a US Navy veteran who lives in the Seventh District. He is the CEO of The Warriors Road, a nonprofit organization that focuses on healing veterans and first responders through equine therapy.
I don't care what you say.
Something that is a very unique forging of both his great passion in service for our military veterans, but also taking very unique stock of the fact that we have equine-keeping community, uh, equine-keeping in my district. And so, it's a really beautiful merging of the two. The program provides horsemanship skills, ridership classes, and all-encompassing ranch and horseback experiences at no cost. Most importantly, this program creates a sense of community, purpose, and belonging for so many veterans that we know often struggle and face feelings of isolation and severe mental health impacts and PTSD. This is particularly important for them as they are going through their ongoing recovery. And I know that's something that's very important for so many of us. It's a conversation that so often was taboo when we talk about the impacts and the effects of PTSD. It's why I introduced, for example, a drone show in lieu of pyrotechnic fireworks, so we could celebrate the fourth responsibly and respect the impacts of what people feel after their tenure in service to our country. And so, for the past four years, Warriors Road has helped more than a thousand veterans and first responders. And the organization, which is in Lakeview Terrace, home to one of our most beautiful equine-keeping communities in the City of Los Angeles.
Give me one sec, guys.
I'm really proud to recognize Andre for his contribution, his ongoing service to veterans and first responders, and being an outstanding contributing member of our veteran community. But my thanks to Andre and to all of those of you that are here today being honored for your service. We are deeply, deeply grateful.
Thank you very much. Next... Thank you very much. Next, it's a pleasure to recognize representing Council District Eight, Councilmember Marquis Harris Tossen.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, members, for, uh, engaging so passionately in this celebration. Uh, veterans are a big part of what makes this, in fact, a city of angels. And so for us to take a moment as leadership of this city to recognize them one by one is, is, uh, one of the greatest privileges of serving on this, this body. Uh, this morning, I want to first acknowledge, uh, my, uh, Veterans Coordinator for the Eighth Council District Sergeant Anthony Anderson. Where'd you go, Anthony? Just wave your hand. Um, I just want to recognize him. Uh, our, he, he organizes all of our veterans' activities, um, and stays in touch with our, our veterans and our veterans organizations. And this morning, we're, uh, very, uh, proud to honor, uh, my good friend, uh, from the, uh, United States Military, none other than Sergeant George Graham from the United States Air Force. Let's give him a big round of applause. Mister, uh, Mister Graham is a, uh, Vietnam, uh, War Veteran, um, uh, being drafted in nineteen sixty-nine to join the Air Force Command and Control uh, as a specialist technician. Um, he, uh, is one of a very small amount of, of Americans who had occasion to pick up a gun, put on a bulletproof vest, put on a helmet, and actually go into combat on behalf of and in support of our, uh, country. He served honorably in, uh, Japan, I'm sorry, in Vietnam. Um, there were over eighty-nine days of rockets and bombs where he was living in a tent or a barracks, uh, to Ms. Rodriguez's point. Uh, so when someone does something like sets off a firework, it, uh, has much more indelible impacts on, uh, our neighbors that are veterans. When he returned, uh, after being discharged in nineteen seventy-three, he obtained a degree in Black History and Economics from this college university, City College University of New York. Uh, he then, uh, Councilman Soto Martinez became a union representative and shop steward, uh, at the TWA and, uh, Mobile Oil Fields down in the South Bay, uh, with oil and chemical and atomic workers. Uh, and after retiring there and, and actually while you were working at the oil company, he became a representative for our DART program. So, uh, civilians ride along with police officers on domestic violence calls. And, uh, George did that for several years, uh, and eventually came to, uh, Community Coalition and worked for us as a, uh, organizer and a senior coordinator. I think he probably retired four times while I was working there. He would retire and we'd have a party and we'd come back Monday and he'd still be there. And so, uh, he had such a love, uh, for the community that even now, uh, I occasionally get a call that says, Councilman, Ms. Johnson is in the hospital. She's on this floor. You need to stop by. And you need to say, uh, hello. And so we're, we're very, uh, proud to, to honor, uh, George. He's just a light in our community. And, uh, last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. Sometimes, uh, as the councilman, I'll wander into a discotheque and there'll be a big crowd in a circle and people are looking in on somebody. And it'll be George because he is one of the best disco dancers, uh, anywhere in Southern California. So, uh, we're very proud to honor Sergeant George Graham this morning. Thank you so much.
It's unfortunate we don't have some video of that, actually, Councilmember Harris Tossen. Uh, next, recognizing, uh, representing the ninth district, um, pleased to recognize Councilmember Curran Price. Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Cold? I don't know. Maybe he's got a cold.
Just a great honor.
Starting to get, you know, chilly, windy.
Veterans, uh, this morning, Mr. President, thank you for your leadership in making that happen for us. We know that all across, uh, the country this weekend and throughout the world, we're honored to, honoring brave men and women for their tireless service to our country. We recognize their commitment to defend the freedoms that we all cherish so deeply. Uh, to veterans of all walks of life, you are the epitome of the American dream. You are a true representation of hardship, sacrifice, and strength. But let us not forget that behind every brave vet stands a mother, father, wife, husband, children, friends, who've contributed to the dedication of our service members. And for that, you are all our heroes and we salute you all. The city of LA, uh, is home to more than ninety thousand veterans, many of whom are constituents in my district, CD nine. In fact, the ninth district, in the ninth district, we recently had a ribbon cutting for an affordable housing project, Casa de Rosas. Uh, that was once an abandoned building that was a barracks for soldiers during World War Two. Now it's a safe place for male and female veterans to call home. But our commitment to these heroes and she-ros cannot and should not stop there. We should always recognize that their leadership is important and, and know that the bravery that each of those members have contributed. Today, I'm pleased to honor our hero, George Salem. George is a longtime active member of the community, uh, and has been active in our district for, for, for many, many years. He's always been a strong advocate for the rights of veterans and their families, uh, and he is steadfast in that. George, thank you for continuing to be an inspiration to others and for leaving an everlasting mark in history. We thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Next, representing the tenth Council District, I'm pleased to call upon Councilmember Heather Hutt. Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I, I just want to take a moment, echo my colleagues and thank all of our veterans for your service, for the time that you've spent so we could sleep at night. I certainly appreciate you, just as all my colleagues do. Today, it's, uh, truly a pleasure to pay tribute to a remarkable individual within our community, Teresa Lawson.
Here's Teresa.
Um, Teresa's journey, service, and contribution amplifies the very best of our community. Her journey as a soldier began when she enlisted in the United States Army in nineteen sixty-nine. She was transported from California to Fort McAllen in Anniston, Alabama, where she underwent combat training. While there, she demonstrated exceptional determination and leadership. Following her basic training, Teresa joined advanced individual training where she became a clerk therapist. There she excelled in her MOS, but flourished in areas like weapon training and physical fitness, earning her a well-deserved permission, um, promotion from Private E one to Specialist Four. Teresa's journey then led her to Fort Ord, California, where she was assigned to the JAG Office and responsible for various administrative duties. Her hard work and determination led her to be promoted to Specialist Five, where she supervised other soldiers. And her service doesn't end with her military service. After three years, Teresa received an honorable discharge and chose to embark on a new career in education. She attended Cal State Dominguez Hills, earning a bachelor's degree in liberal arts and became an elementary school teacher. After dedicating thirty-two years to shaping the future of our community's children, Teresa just retired in twenty twenty-three. While Teresa has received prestigious recognition such as Good Conduct Medals, the US Army Qualification Rifle Medal, the Army Service Ribbon, her legacy will truly be remembered by the many lives she touched. Her dedication, discipline, and unwavering commitment to our country, our city, and the people of tenth district is why we're so honored to have her with us today. Teresa, we thank you for the way you selflessly served our nation and our communities. As Councilwoman, I'm so proud to honor you, your resilience, and your hard work, and proud to call you our Veteran of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutt. Next up, representing the eleventh district, I'm very pleased to call upon Councilmember Tracy Park. Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for carrying forward this very important tradition of recognizing the great men and women who honorably serve our country, both during times of peace and times of war. As the proud daughter of a US Army veteran myself, uh, this day is personally special for me. But it is especially exciting to get to honor Rob Reynolds. Rob's military service cultivated a deep-seated sense of brotherhood that today inspires his unwavering advocacy for homeless veterans. A native of Westfield, Massachusetts, Rob enlisted as an infantryman when he was just seventeen years old, and he proudly served our nation from two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, including a tour in Iraq with the Tenth Mountain Division when he was just eighteen years old. After his service, Rob's journey brought him to California, where he served as a firefighter with San Luis Obispo and then Riverside County until two thousand and seventeen. Rob began experiencing trouble with PTSD symptoms, and that led him to the West LA VA campus to be part of the PTSD Combat Track Program. While he was there seeking help, Rob actually found himself having to navigate the many barriers that veterans see, veterans face when seeking much-needed services. He also encountered more than forty unhoused veterans living on San Vicente Boulevard. Instead of walking away from those homeless veterans, Rob took up the task of helping them himself. His tireless work was actually crucial in getting those forty individuals moved off the streets and into the tiny homes on the VA campus. Many of those individuals have now moved in to permanent housing at the VA. Rob's actions speak to an important truth. Every veteran deserves respect, support, and a place to call home. His determination to fight for those who served our country, whether they stood by his side or not, is a testament to his character and our city is so grateful to him. Today, we honor his service and his continuing battle to ensure that every veteran is recognized and cared for. Therefore, I would like to recognize Rob Reynolds as my distinguished honoree as we celebrate our past and current veterans.
Thank you very much. Next up, I'm pleased to call upon, representing Council District Twelve, the Honorable Councilmember John Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, I've often shared with you the story
I'm gonna say this is the longest, at least they did the thing for the veterans. It was the longest presentation for one person or one group.
My parents, neither of them would have the opportunity to come to this country, meet in Hollywood, and I have never had the opportunity to be born and raised in the greatest country in the world. I owe a debt of gratitude to all of our veterans. And it's because of that why I've spent so much time with different veteran groups in my council district, supporting their different efforts. The pandemic unfortunately took so many things away from us, uh, one of which was our council celebration of these, uh, servicemen and women. And I'm so glad to see that it's made its return, and I want to express my gratitude to Councilmember, uh, Council President Corcoran and his staff for ensuring that we have a proper celebration. Uh, colleagues, today I'm joined by Steve and Nancy Cohen, the children of Council District Twelve's Veteran of the Year, Harvey Cohen, who bravely fought in World War Two. The last time we were asked to nominate a veteran, without pause, we immediately knew that we'd be nominating Harvey. Unfortunately, the presentation was put on hold, and so we had to wait until today to celebrate his life and legacy. Harvey Cohen was many things in addition to being a veteran. He was a father, a grandfather. He led a successful pre- professional career. He was leader at his synagogue. He was a friend to all of his local veteran groups, including Wings Over Wendy's. And is now, and now he's also our Veteran of the Year.
Palestinian veterans.
Harvey Cohen was born on May twelfth, nineteen twenty-two and passed away on October fifteenth of this year. His passing has left those of us who knew him deeply saddened and yearning for the chance to pay our respects one last time. But at a hundred and one years old, Harvey lived a full life, one filled with accomplishments, service, and family. Originally from, uh, Mass, uh, Manchester, New Hampshire, Harvey and his family later moved to Boston, Massachusetts, where he graduated from Boston English High School. In nineteen forty-one, Harvey made a decision that would ever alter his life's journey and joined the Army where he trained as a medical lab technician.
What is going on today?
In the Army, Harvey found himself serving around the world in places like France, Italy, and Northern Africa. Like so many of our veterans here today, those experiences served as a foundation for how Harvey viewed and enjoyed his world. After he was discharged from service, Harvey did the thing that any good Army man did at the time, he came home to marry his sweetheart Betty.
All I see is Twitch in there right now.
Together, they moved to Portland, Oregon, where he began working at the Veterans Hospital, and together they built their family, welcoming a baby girl and a baby boy, as you can see behind me. As, uh, after his successful career of, um, helping growing, uh, companies across this country, he retired, he remained active as a leader in his synagogue, and helped raise and spoil his grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I came to know Mr. Cohen, as I said earlier, because he was a proud member of Wings Over Wendy's.
It like puts all the five chats or most of it together.
With a, um, commemoration for his one-hundredth birthday.
Is that Mr. Herman back there? Alright, guys.
You know, these, uh, men and women that are part of Wings Over Wendy's are truly living history of our country, and I appreciate all the work that they do. He was a selfless man that throughout the entirety of his life, and the various individuals impacted on his journey will undoubtedly never forget, Mr. Cohen. I know that I won't.
Today is going backwards, but it wasn't. I got it. It was great.
We hope that you are resting in peace.
I got that phone call.
Colleagues, if you would, uh, please join me in joining, um, in honoring his two kids, Stephen and Nancy, in post mortem for his, their father, Harvey Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Next up, I'm pleased to recognize, representing the thirteenth Council District, Councilmember Hugo Soto Martinez. Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much.
Where's your aide that hates Jews? Oh, that's right, they got fired.
Uh, my honoree today is Abel Martín. Uh, very similar to myself, Abel Martín was born to Mexican, uh, Mexican immigrants who came to
Notice how they never told us about that. The news did. Just happened. I don't know. Two weeks ago, maximum.
Joined the United States Navy, where he served for four and a half years.
They ain't said a fucking peep about it. Mum's the word. Especially right now.
Abel actually found himself struggling with homelessness, something that is far too familiar with a lot of our veterans after he completed his service in the military. I'm happy to say that Abel has not just found stable housing, but he's found the last decade plus helping fellow veterans who are struggling with homelessness. Today, Abel stands before us as a past partners, Associate Director of Veterans Services, using his personal experience to connect to so many of the folks that are unhoused that are also veterans. And as you know, when you're an organizer trying to move people, having those personal stories to share with folks experiencing the same thing is an invaluable, uh, thing to have in your, in your, in your tool belt. Uh, every day he wakes up committed to providing support and guidance for some of our most vulnerable residents, whether that's through coordinating services at some of past housing sites or working directly with unhoused veterans so, so we can meet their needs. Abel's inspiring story is a testament to his perseverance, but it also should remind us that as a city and as a nation, we can and must do better for our folks who come after serving our country. This Veterans Day, I hope we can take example like, like Abel's and remind ourselves and recommit ourselves.
Colonel Sanders on his day off. Who's Colonel? Oh, you think he looks like Colonel Sanders? Colonel Sanders, that hair. He had a full head of white hair, Colonel Sanders did. The Colonel.
Still finger-licking good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Soto Martinez. Next up, representing Council District Fourteen, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Kevin De Leon.
Yes, him is right there with the puppet.
Uh, unfortunately, uh,
Oh, De Leon.
Our honoree could not be here today, uh, but, uh, he sends his best wishes to all the council members as well as to his fellow honorees. But, uh, it is with great pleasure that I will But uh, it is with great pleasure that I would like to honor Tony Zapata, uh, who was born in Del Rio, Texas, who graduated from high school back in May nineteen sixty-three. Now, in January of nineteen sixty-five, he enlisted in the United States Navy. After boot camp down south, a couple hours from us in San Diego, California, uh, in April nineteen sixty-five, he went abroad. Uh, on the USS Evans DE ten twenty-three in Bem- Bemerton, Washington as a machinist, May fireman apprentice. In August of nineteen sixty-seven, Tony was assigned to North Island Naval Air Station in Coronado, California, right across that bridge from San Diego. As an airman aviation ordinance man, he was trained there for the search and rescue operations unit on the NHU one helicopters, also known as the Hueys.
That's what Kern County Sheriff's still flying, when he flew. I told you. That's a helicopter from the fifties. They flew it heavily in Vietnam in the sixteen, in sixty-eight, sixty-nine. Okay? And they're still flying it today in Kern County. That's gotta tell you something. That's not Air One. Not Air One. Air One is the police department, but the Kern County Sheriff's rescue chopper straight that old. But you gotta remember, those choppers are every time they come down, they're gone through. They're gone over. Every single time.
By the Vietcong and the North Vietnamese, that surprise offense against the United States.
The maintenance is sick on these things.
After one year in Vietnam, he came back to North Island Naval Air Station where he was honorably discharged in February of nineteen sixty-nine. Tony was awarded the National Defense Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal, Republic of Vietnam Service Medal.
Although considering the chopper he was in, you'd figure it had a collision avoidance system, but it didn't. And that's what killed them. That and, you know, having to fly automatically on your instruments and not your, what you're seeing. It can uh, overtake you quick, even with the best of pilots. You don't know what, you know, you get vertigo. You don't know which way is up or down, left or right. You don't know which way you're going. All of a sudden.
After retirement in two thousand and six, he started full time with the VFW and in June of twenty-ten, he was appointed commander of the veterans.
They should have never flew that day and that was the problem. Cause even the, even the police department wasn't flying that very same day. They grounded all the choppers due to weather. They decided to fly, whether it was a pilot, whether it was Kobe, whoever it was. Made the decision. It's a sad deal. That's what cost them. The poor decision to fly. That's really what cost them their lives.
Uh, send letters and sending care packages to Americans overseas. After stepping down as commander.
Yes, I'm saying, Remington.
He became the commander.
Flight restrictions across the entire county.
Post ten thirteen, where he is still today. One last thing I want to add with regards to Tony Zapata is that uh, an ongoing theme with a couple of the members and I know that.
No, they haven't done any talks yet. They're just honoring the veterans as they should. Sad that it takes so long to get around to the veterans. Every other meaningless club gets their just due. But without these folks, they wouldn't even have their jobs. They probably wouldn't be speaking or they'd be speaking German. If they were even alive. Same with me.
The Marines, the Navy, or the Army, that we train you, we feed you.
Most of them are World War Two vets, you know. Vietnam, Korean War.
And we have so many folks living on the streets. Tony Zapata uh, has not experienced that, but Tony Zapata has advocated. And I, obviously we've had members who've experienced it and who advocate it for now, but this is something that collectively as a society, we must fight for to get folks off the streets and put a roof over the head. But it was great honor, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, that I stand today.
What's sad is Shells that they, they blocked your, I had to push show for that to be shown, all because you used the word scum, I bet. Which I agree with. Don't, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm right here with you. But I'm talking about YouTube censorship is that bad. You didn't say anything in there derogatory, but maybe the word scum and that's not really.
Thank you very much. Bringing it home from one five, the southern end of the reaches of our city. Thank you very much for this opportunity to recognize.
The censorship is overwhelming on YouTube.
The diversity of experience and service is remarkable and the common thread is this selfless service. And the thread continues here with Martin John Chacon. Uh, Martin was born in Wilmington, California, son of the one five.
He's too young to be in any of those wars.
In the Banning Mansion, a preschool that's no longer there. He went to grade school at Holy Family.
Maybe isn't it rock?
Which is also, the church is there, but the school is closed.
Is that him? Oh man, that's a, oh, that picture's different. Okay.
I went to Holy Trinity, he went to Holy Family. We actually played opposite each other.
He probably went to Vietnam.
On the gridiron. And we can debate who won those games, but it was always uh, it was always great to play Holy Family. Martin grew up to go to Banning High School, once a pilot, always a pilot, and right out of Banning, he went into the Air Force. And he served admirably in the Air Force and after about thirteen years in the Air Force, went into the Army. And as Martin says, he was married to Uncle Sam for twenty years. His last bit of service in the Army was Operation Iraqi Freedom. And when he came home.
Desert Storm, yeah.
To Wilmington, California, he, he resumed his profession as a, as a electrician for a little bit.
See, but I said that when I saw this picture.
Became a longshoreman. And Martin's been a ILWU local thirteen member for thirteen.
Then I saw him and I was like, no, he's gotta be older.
Almost twenty years. Uh, so twenty years married Uncle Sam, twenty years married to the docks. But really importantly, in his service, when he came out of the, when he came out of the service, he immediately joined the post. He joined uh, twenty-nine sixty-seven. And as we call it, it's the best little post on the West Coast. And Martin was a commander for about nine years, uh, but uh, after his, during this whole time in the post, he has been running the color guard. And that's where I see him the most. There is not an event that we have anywhere in the harbor area where Martin and his fellow vets are not honoring the colors, opening our meetings. Uh, very busy at Memorial Day, very busy at Veterans Day. And it is always great to see Martin in community and what really touches me besides his commitment to his, to his service in the military, his commitment to his union, his commitment to his community. His commitment to these events where he's showing reverence to our country and to our flag is really, really, really admirable. It comes through and it is, he is a great example in community to all of our groups, but especially our young ones coming up.
Carlos, no, they've been talking for fifty-eight minutes honoring the veterans. There's been no public comment yet.
For his great service to our country and to our community. You know, God bless you and thank you very much.
God bless America. Thank you, Council Member McCosker. Uh, I'd like to take a moment to again recognize Council Member Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'd be remiss if we didn't uh, recognize a very special veteran, uh, Council District Twelve. And that is our very own Marine Sergeant Eric King behind me. Who proudly served on the front lines for this country between, between two thousand and four and two thousand and twelve. We are very proud of his service and we are even more proud to have him as a member of our CD twelve family.
Thank you very much.
The protests are going off again, guys.
To, to all of you, of course, thank you so much.
Live in Madrid.
For being with us as, as we close today. Thomas Jefferson said that the price of freedom is eternal vigilance and yet most of us are never called upon to pay that price. Uh, we just enjoy the benefit of it. And the veterans who are here who served um, are the ones who pay that price. And we know that we live in a time right now that demonstrates the fragility of our democracy and the importance of the oath that our veterans take. Uh, when they begin their service to protect the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And in fact.
They want to get rid of the Muslims from Spain, from what you understand? Is that what they're talking about?
Remind us all what it means to be American and to stand up for the values that this country stands for. And your service is part of a long chain of service that began when a bunch of farmers picked up their muskets at the North Bridge and scared the redcoats away.
Has to do with Catalonia independence.
Has continued from generation to generation to generation since then, uh, right until the present day.
That's what I said. I can't delve into any of it. I don't even know.
Council Member Rodriguez for recognizing your.
Pedro Sanchez in prison.
I'm the son of a.
Wasn't Pedro Sanchez fucking Pedro from fucking Napoleon Dynamite?
I'm the brother.
I'm pretty sure it was Pedro Sanchez.
Veteran of the Navy.
That was the name of the character, wasn't it?
Uh, Annapolis graduate.
Anybody, any Napoleon fans out there? Pretty sure though.
So we really know that, as they say, all gave some, some gave all. Um, but whether you served in combat or not, whether you suffered through the hell that that is.
And Summer Wheatley.
Everyone who has served this country has sacrificed. Uh, and some continue to pay that sacrifice even long after their service, as we've heard uh, today in some of the descriptions of our honorees. And so, uh, please know that this is just a small way for us to express to you our thanks, our gratitude. And also our immense pride in all of you and to everyone who's worn the uniform of the United States of America. Uh, you really stand for the best of our country and we're grateful to you. So once again, let's please recognize.
Look at the old lady right there.
And all veterans who've served the United States of Ameri-
Like she out there yelling with her mask, her chin diaper on screaming. She angry. Look at her. Look at her. Look at the old guy with the fucking, with his flag up and everything. She's pissed. She's angry. Shout out to her, man. I love it. A big shout out to the veterans, man. Of course, thank you for your service.
Alright, uh, with that, we are ready to resume uh, the meeting with the public comment section of our meeting. So, Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read in the instructions.
I think that might be a record. Hour two minutes in before we got to public comment.
Members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request a speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
To, you know, to push their authoritarian selves, man.
Two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into a meeting, press star nine to request a speak.
Nos, nos somos.
When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
Fucking see it. Guys are failing with the, with the whole, the sign all there.
When it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on and slash or whether you want.
Bro, if I had any of these apartments, I'd be sitting on my balcony smoking Hooters, just watching and filming all of it, doing the play by play.
Open for public comment and if you wish.
I'd have to have a gas mask or something for the tear gas thing. We'll eventually be shot.
Before beginning the general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up.
Dang fantastic Sam's took care of him. Look at his haircut today, bro.
Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can.
Smooth. He didn't sleep in the Prius.
Or if we cannot tell whether you are speaking on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to immediately and clearly get on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are twenty-six through thirty-two. You may of course speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction during your one minute of general public comment.
No calic in sight.
For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself.
When was the last time you actually saw a globe with your eyes?
At that point, you need to unmute yourself or unfortunately you will forfeit your time.
Cause I don't have one and I can't remember the last time I've seen a globe.
Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important.
It's almost like seeing a payphone.
While waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute.
They're not already. I'm sure there's some that are very valuable, but.
If you're listening to the meeting on another device.
Even more collectible.
Turn down the volume on that device immediately when it is your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices.
Saw one a couple of weeks ago, Charles.
Alright, thank you. So I'm gonna call a number of names and as I call your name, I'd ask that.
I'm sure it's been a while since you've seen one besides that, unless you work at a school maybe.
Where the sergeants will be able to direct you up to the podium. And uh, we have a number of people.
Sure it's like a sexuality globe or something.
To speak about item number twenty-four, uh, just so that it's uh, clear that sometimes we go through these a little quickly at the beginning of the meeting. Item number twenty-four was continued. You'll still be able to speak about it today, uh, as a general public comment matter. Um, but I just want you all to know that it was continued at your question.
Probably offensive to have a globe in the channel, I mean, in the classroom.
So um, with that, I'm gonna call a number of names.
Soon they're just gonna remove USA off the maps and everything. Cause it's just offensive. Like people try to do now burning USA flags.
Esther Brown, Maria Breones.
Getting burnt on the daily.
Alex Schlaffman, Joshua Lux.
By vultures that live here, cockroaches that came to our country.
And Sylvia Arenas, please.
Cause knew that, they knew they lived in an armpit. They didn't want to live in the armpit anymore.
Come on up to the side.
So they came here.
First one up can, can go ahead and speak. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for um, giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I do wanna, this is really for the council member.
What is your name, sir?
My name is James Lee.
Okay.
And which items would you like to speak on?
Um, item number twenty-four.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Yes, sir. Um, you know, I, I, I worked two jobs. Um, I worked at Yamashiro and I worked at the airport.
I love Yamashiro.
To buy a two plus. I own a RSO. And for the last three, four years, it's been really terrible for me as inflation is eight point seven percent twenty-twenty-two, four point seven percent twenty-twenty-one. So you're trying to extend this, um, pandemic's been over two years. And I just think it's unfair for RSO owners where we're actually subsidizing those people who are, who has a bigger apartment buildings. So it's, I just wanted to say, just be fair with, you know, what we're trying to do here. We're trying to survive. It's really hard cause our rent barely pays for the mortgage. And we have to raise rent because water heater, I just replaced one four years ago. It was nine hundred dollars. Today is eighteen hundred dollars. So think about the difference what we have to go through every day. All I ask is just be fair. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less.
And I want you to be fair and think about that when you go in that voting booth on the end of twenty-twenty-four, what, November fourth, I think it is, whatever it is, twenty-twenty-four? Yeah. Not, shut the fuck up.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes. Esther Brown. And I would like to speak a general comment and I was prepared for number twenty-four, but they are one together, okay?
You have one minute.
Honorable.
Honorable.
Honorable council people. I have been in the housing business since I purchased my first fourplex back in nineteen seventy-two. I can confidently say I have seen it all. It is understandable that you feel a need to protect the tenants from excessive rent hikes, especially at times of economic hardship. However, your protection of tenant must be, must take into consideration three factors. One, your limit on rent raises must be fair. Don't punish housing providers simply because you have the power to do so. It isn't fair. Two, it used to be that there was no tension between owners and tenants. Unfortunately, due to excessive rent control and other petty regulations, we have turned the relationship into one. Can I get, just finish?
Speaker, your time has expired.
Speaker, we don't care. You all get ten seconds more. Sit down.
My name is Maria Breones and I'm a member of Obase. You'll know me already. So um, the cities rent free skip thousands of um, income trends stabilized, uh, tenants securely. How's during the pandemic, these tenants cannot? How's during the pandemic? These tenants cannot afford a huge rent increase when the current rent freezes expires in February. The problem was some of my mom and pop landlords struggling with their property maintenance shouldn't cost fall on the shoulders of tenants who cannot afford a second rent increase. We already have many homeless people. Don't let more families go onto the street with the rent, uh, increases. We are asking for rent, uh, freeze until the next year. If it's possible, please help us stay home. There are many people that have, have kids and they are going to the street and it's not fair for the children to suffer the consequences of the pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Oh, stop moving the camera. There's Pickle Dick. Shout out to Pickle Dick. He's right there.
My name is Alex Schlaflman. I'm here to speak on item number twenty four.
Pickle Dick in the house.
Briefly introduce the fact that
Oh, um is there, guys?
Family and myself as well came here as immigrants.
There he goes.
Our first opportunity to make a life for ourselves was through the housing industry and I grew up cleaning and painting apartments. The goal of all apartment owners is to provide good housing to tenants. But the idea of either extending the rent increase freeze or limiting the rent increase is gonna hurt the housing industry as a whole, hurt us and hurt my family's business. It is difficult, if not impossible, with the inflation that's happened to be able to continue to operate these buildings. And now with these rent increase freezes and the hike of the in, of not only the inflation, but also the interest rate environment, please know that apartment owners typically get five-year loans.
Uh-oh, bringing little kids in. Mr. Hermanite there, is he? I don't see him.
Three and a half percent interest rates to seven or higher. We, we cannot continue to afford these apartment buildings under this environment.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
They hit him out back just in case the craziness from their ears. Alright, guys. Smoke. And girls, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Bueno dias.
Good morning. Hola señora, puede por favor recordar nuestro nombre bajo el que se alistó y los temas de los que va a hablar.
And can you please pull down the mic just a little bit?
Y por favor cuando hable de una pausa para traducir, puede alistarse al micrófono, puede acercarse un poco más?
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Sylvia Arenas. Soy miembro del colectivo poder comunitario.
Alright, good morning. I'm Sylvia Arenas, a member of the community power collective.
Soy inquilina de Boyle Heights. Estoy aquí para pedirles que aprueben la moción de una extensión de seis meses del congelamiento de renta.
I'm a renter in Boyle Heights. I'm here to ask that you please approve the rent freeze for at least six months.
De la ciudad de Los Angeles. Soy una persona incapacitada y yo dependo del seguro social y un aumento no lo podría pagar.
I'm a disabled person and I depend on social security.
Enough.
Couldn't handle an increase of my rent now.
Por el momento no estamos preparados para un aumento así.
Stop spooking.
Y no sé qué me esperaría si, si, si no paran esto. Gracias.
That at the moment, we're not prepared for a rent hike and I don't know what would happen to us if they actually approved one, but thank you.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Uh, yeah, my name is Casper Martin and I'm speaking on item number twenty four.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, great. Um, my in-laws have owned a six-unit apartment building in the Pico Robertson area for almost fifty years. Um, so it is under rent control, which they're very happy about. Um, and they're happy to play by the rules. Um, but all of their costs have gone up as other landlords have testified. In particular, they've spent over a hundred thousand dollars during the pandemic, uh, to add security, uh, security cameras, capital improvements, improve the landscaping, better lighting, um, all of this was invested in the property. They're not looking to refill their coffers. They're not even looking to get paid back on that. What they would like to do is be able to keep up with their other costs, with inflation, with everything else that comes along with managing the building. They love being landlords. They rent their units below market rate and they wanna be able to keep providing this service to the residents of Los Angeles. But they can't do it without being able to raise the rent even a little bit. Thank you.
We wanna take a second. We have a special, special announcement from Councilmember Park of the eleventh district.
Double special?
Council President, I just wanted to take this opportunity to welcome to the John Ferraro Chambers, our second and third graders from the Westland School in Brentwood, in Brentwood. Everybody wave, you're on TV.
It looks like he's crying. He's not crying, is he? No, he's laughing. I thought he was crying for a second. I'd cry too, kid, if I had to go there.
In creating a social studies-based curriculum that actually brings these kids to local government and gives them the opportunity to see what leadership in action looks like. I am so incredibly happy to have these young people in council.
See how they think of themselves like leaders? They're not leading any, they're leading us. Look at her! That's my face right there. That's my face.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Park.
They're leading that fucking place into the toilet. That's the only place they're leading it. Hey, we got a Cardinal fan in there. Little Arizonaian. Old Cardinal fan.
Eva Garcia, Amelia Kressig, uh, Maria Lucia Navarrete, uh, Anna Maria Gonzalez, Hassan Zeniga, Jessica Melendez, David Kasekyan.
Oh, you guys aren't gonna leave the kids in here, are you? Ah, man, someone's gonna go, it's a good thing that like, you know, uh, what's his name? Um, what's his name? Mike, Mike Greenberg or whatever? He's not here or, or Mr. Herman.
As you approach the mic, can you say your name?
It's the only reason they're leaving him in here.
Buenos dias.
Whoa.
Mi nombre es Eva Garcia y soy organizadora con colectivo poder comunitario. Y vengo a hablar del general y el número veinticuatro.
I don't see Sax, yeah, not right now. Just Spindler at the moment. Spindler got kicked out last time, so it's being interesting to see what he says.
Eva Garcia y vengo a hablar del en público, en comentario general y el veinticuatro.
I deny his right to speak. On issue twenty four and give my public comment.
Y vengo a pedir que por favor apoyen a la moción de extensión de congelamiento de renta, pero también a que no haya un aumento de renta.
I'd like for you to please support the extension of the rent freeze and please keep the rent from rising.
Cada vez que vengo aquí sigo comentando lo mismo, que nuestra comunidad no se ha recuperado de este Covid.
I always say the same thing. Our community still hasn't recovered from the Covid effects.
Que día con día llegan inquilinos con miedo de ser desalojados.
Day to day, these tenants are afraid of being evicted.
Escuché que los dueños están, este, tensionados porque no alcanzan a pagar sus mortgages.
And I hear, hear that the proprietors, these owners are now under pressure because they can't pay for their mortgages.
Y ellos tienen una entrada de dinero.
And you see, they do have an income.
Y nuestra comunidad está devastada.
Our community now has been devastated.
Imagínense qué sienten ellos.
You can imagine what these people feel.
Al sentir que en un día de estos van a perder su hogar.
Knowing that any day they can lose their home.
Y que no pueden pagar un aumento de renta.
And they won't be able to afford any further increase in rent.
Porque hay vendedores, hay gente de la tercera edad que vive de un seguro, que es una miseria lo que le dan.
Their street vendors and their senior citizens, they live off of misery.
O comen o pagan renta.
So it's either eating or paying rent.
Es por eso que exigimos que un congelamiento de renta es necesario.
So we demand this rent freeze. It's necessary.
Y también no un aumento de renta porque la vivienda no es un mercado. La vivienda es esencial y vital para cada ser humano.
Stop increasing the rent because living quarters is essential for every human being. It's not a luxury.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, man. Hopefully they don't get too crazy in front of the kids. They're gonna let the kids go right now. Yeah, they're taking them out.
Mi nombre es María Navarrete.
Like, I think we should let the kids go now. Time to go, kids.
Pertenesco a la organización AS.
Let's go have lunch outside. Time for pizza, cookies outside.
Organization.
Uh-oh, somebody forgot their banner, sweater.
La, la, para pedirles que no pueda, no, este, hagan el aumento porque vemos muchas personas de la tercera edad, la cual todavía trabajamos, pero el dinero que ganamos no nos alcanza.
I'd like to ask you to please freeze the rent increase because there are so many senior citizens that are tenants and we have to live off of whatever we can get with our little work and it's just not enough.
Somos miles y miles de personas las cuales desde la pandemia no nos hemos podido recuperar.
And it's thousands and thousands of people that have not been recovered since the pandemic times.
Al regresar a nuestros trabajos, no nos han regresado completas las horas y nos están desconta, nos están quitando un día. Nosotros no sabemos qué hacer para poder solucionar lo del problema de la renta.
So we go back to work and they don't give us our full hours. They furlough us. They only give us a few days, so we don't know what to do with this rent problem we have.
Quiero que sean justos y piensen que nos, que las personas no nos podemos ir a la calle tantas. Por eso les pido que traten de tener un tiempo más razonable para poder pensar y ver las cosas como deberían de ser porque en realidad no sabemos qué hacer.
I just want you to be just and fair so that so many people are not out in the streets. Take a little bit of time and meditate and think about what we should do and extend this. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Not one of these people addressed the fact that it's their, um, you know, tyranny, their requirements during that time. Their laws that shut these businesses down for even longer than anywhere else in the country. Cops and firefighters still have to take that garbage if they want their job. Still right now.
Hi, my name is Mindy Akreski. I'm from District Ten. I belong to the ACE organization and what I wanna ask is that you please
Nos ayuden a aprobar la misión de una extensión para de seis meses el congelamiento de nuestras rentas.
I would like to ask you to help us in our mission to get this six-month freeze on rent increase.
Y soy una persona de setenta años
Yeah, go puppeteer. I'm just waiting for him to come up.
De mi pensión de mi esposo y estoy muy preocupada
Just waiting to see this face.
Porque la, la pensión no es mucha, apenas me alcanza para la renta y ciertos gastos que yo tengo, pero estamos, estoy preocupada porque qué voy a hacer si
Well, I'm a seven-year-old, seventy-year-old person and I live off of my husband's pension and the pension is just not enough for a rent increase, so I'm very worried to know that it might happen.
Yeah, nurses too, absolutely. That's what I'm saying. Healthcare workers across the board, law enforcement.
Personas que yo conozco que también están pasando
Any government job, I bet you if you work at a school, you have to be completely vaccinated to get a job as a fucking janitor even. I bet.
No nos va a alcanzar para una renta y este, que nos puedan ayudar
This also shows that you're willing to kiss the ring. Are you willing to kiss the ring?
So I'd like to ask, because it's not just myself
If you don't kiss the ring, we don't want you. There's another one right behind you that will kiss the ring.
So we need your help or help us find a more affordable place. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thanks.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for having me here. Uh, I'd like to speak on this letter that I got for eviction for no reason and I'd like to know if I could continue staying at the house.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment, but before you begin, can you please remind us of the name you signed up under?
Uh, I think it's, uh, De Leon's district.
Uh, sorry, the name that you signed up under?
These guys
Uh, Richard Garcia.
So he's coming for law advice?
So you have one minute for general public comment.
It'll be quick. So I'd like to know if I could get some help on this, uh, for eviction. I work and I give donations and I'd like to know if I can continue staying at this location. That's it. Thank you. I'd like to know if I could continue staying at this location for this eviction that I've got for no reason and I could, I'd like to know if I could speak with somebody at the end.
So if you'd like to submit documents, you can, uh, please give them to the sergeants.
I wanna stay, even though they're evicting me, I wanna stay cause I give donations and work. Well, apparently you don't pay your fucking rent. If you paid your rent, then you wouldn't be evicted.
If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under
No, you can't stay. Just make it quick and easy, bud.
I'm speaking on items, on item twenty four.
Gonna have to find another place to stay. It's unfortunate.
Thank you. I'm with Trust Out LA and I'm here, I'm speaking on item twenty four. I'm here to urge you all to support a six-month extension on the rent freeze for RSO units. The city's rent freeze has kept thousands of low-income rent-stabilized tenants securely housed during the pandemic. Uh, these tenants cannot afford a huge rent increase when the current rent freeze expires in February. More and more, we have residents coming to our office because they simply cannot keep up with the rent. Uh, just the other day, we had a woman come to our office pleading with us for help because her, because she didn't want to end up on the streets over the holidays with her, her families yet another year. Uh, her landlord was increasing her rent and including utilities in that increase. Utilities should never be included in the rent increase formula. Further, we believe that a six percent rent increase would, would still lead to substantial displacement and eviction and likely lead or drive an increase in homelessness. Rather than allow a six percent increase, the council should keep the rent freeze in place until the permanent study comes back. Thank you.
Well, the reason the rent's going up so high is because these folks raised the property taxes through the roof and everything else, so
The name you signed up under?
The people that are paying mortgages on their property need help too. So they're gonna raise the rent to pay for them and the property taxes that are highest in the nation, I believe.
A house y vengo aquí a pedir, exigir que nos entiendan como inquilinos
Hi, I'm Lucina Bass. I've come from ACE. I'm in District Nine. I've also come with Keep LA Housed and I've come to, uh, support tenants.
Estoy aquí como inquilina porque esperamos que nos congelen la renta, nos den una congelación de seis meses porque muchas familias vamos a afectadas, nos vamos a ir a la calle, queremos que nos protejan por seis meses.
If you could just pause for a second. Si señora, una pausa por favor. As a tenant, I'd like to say that we want this six-month extension on rent freezes because there's so many families that can't afford their rent and will end up on the street.
Que estiendan por seis meses la congelación porque muchas familias vamos a parar en la calle. Yo como madre soltera trabajo muchas horas para pagar una renta. Solamente yo soy.
So I would just ask for this freeze for six months, please, because I'm a single mother and I have to work so many hours just to pay for the rent. Like I said, a lot of people will end up on the streets.
Mi mayor renta es yo sola tener un apartamento y prohiberle a la dueña que por años le he llenado los bolsillos de dinero para que ahora haya un aumento del siete al nueve. Es injusto.
For, for years, I've been lining the pockets of the proprietor
Right, patriots?
Paying their bills for seven to nine years, so now there's gonna be an increase. It's not fair. We need protection.
Esperamos la protección del concejal, de todos los concejales que nos entiendan.
Taxation after taxation.
Speaker, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Zero representation.
Yes, we ask for all the help from city council because we're of low resources and we're tenants.
Man, what are they giving you for all the taxes that they're taking? Nothing. But spitting in your fucking face. And we just heard yesterday with the Airbnb. Now they want police permits for every Airbnb. What do you think that's about? That's about seven point two million a year. That's what that's about.
Yes.
Not about protection.
And I'm like to speak on, uh, public comment in our item number twenty four.
So item number twenty four is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general, so you have one minute of general public comment.
Sounds good. Well, hello, y'all. My name is Hassan. I'm an organizer with ACE in South LA, um, in different regions of the city of Los Angeles. Um, you just heard some of your constituents in your districts. Imagine the ones that are not here today because they have to work two jobs, three jobs to be able to pay, uh, two thousand five hundred, two bedrooms. That's what the market is right now out there. I can tell you that cause even myself, I'm looking out to move out from bad conditions and harassment where I live as an organizer. Think about those families that are, have four or five people and they're being denied because they have families and they're, and that is somehow legal to discriminate somebody to try to move out because they're trying to look for a cheaper rent. Think about those folks that live in illegal, uh, garages or, or places and they had to suffer that. Think about when you increase the rent next year, how many people are gonna get, you know, all those landlords and corporate landlords are gonna get, you know, encouraged to increase the rent illegally. We all organizers are gonna be facing that and we're gonna bring it back to y'all and that's an issue that you're gonna need to think about and that. Thank you.
Denicia Cypress, Rosa Chiarez, Griselda Lopez, Bijan G, Anna Karian, Martha Zapata, Dr. D.
Dr. D. Dr. D, I remember her. I hear the fucking goat. Do you hear him? Trying to get his ass kicked out. Ah, man, you're gonna get kicked out before we even get this sucker going. Won't you get kicked out?
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Mi nombre es Dionisius Cypress, vengo a dar un comentario público general acerca del asunto veinticuatro.
Hi, my name is Dionisius Cypress, I've come to give a general public comment and speak on issue twenty-four.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
It is a subtle little goat call.
Estoy aquí para, para decirles verdad, que no hagan los, los aumentos de alquileres, en primera verdad, que congelen, que hagan la extensión. Yo estoy escuchando a los dueños que dicen que la inflación, la inflación no solamente los toca a ellos, también nos tocan los otros como inquilinos.
I'd like to say that we really need this freeze on the, six-month freeze on the rent increase and that I've been hearing these owners speak of their increase because of inflation. And what do you think is happening to the tenants? We also get inflation.
La inflación es para todos, nosotros no podemos soportar un aumento de seis, siete o nueve por ciento porque si no quedaríamos fuera de nuestras viviendas, seríamos unos hombres más de la calle.
Yeah, so the support is for all of us because we all cannot afford an increase from six, seven, or nine percent, we may even end up in the streets.
Y entonces estamos pidiendo verdad, que congelen, que congelen los aumentos de alquileres y que hagan la extensión y que los, los aumentos no sean, este, no sean muy de seis, siete o nueve por ciento porque eso nos deja fuera a nosotros de nuestras viviendas. Gracias.
So I'd ask for this rent freeze extension for six months and then if the increase goes through, that they not be so high, that they not be as high as seven percent because it'll affect us all. Thank you.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Sí, buenos días, señora, su nombre, por favor, y el tema del que va a mencionar.
Mi nombre es Griselda López y vengo a hablar del tema del artículo veinticuatro y estoy exigiendo que por favor congelen la renta porque nosotros somos unas personas que trabajamos muy duro para pagar nuestra renta.
I'm Griselda Lopez and I've come to demand that you please extend the freeze on the rent increase because we are hard-working people and we have to work so hard just to pay these high rents.
Y la renta, este, si sube nosotros no vamos a poder comer o pagamos renta o comemos porque está muy bajo los sueldos y la renta sube, no podemos estar, este, comiendo, tengo mis hijos, entonces por eso vengo a exigirles pues que por favor congelen el congelamiento de renta.
So I've come to demand this rent freeze because I'm such a hard worker and I work so hard, I can't even pay for rent and food, we have to choose between food and rent. For wages are so low and rent is so high, so I demand that you please increase this rent freeze. Thank you.
Por favor, este, háganos caso, nosotros, este, venimos aquí a este país a contribuir mucho, hacemos taxes y no es justo que, que nosotros pare, vayamos a parar a la calle por, por el alza de la renta, tenemos muchos gastos.
Yeah, I ask you to please consider us, we've come here as immigrants to work in this country and we have to contribute with taxes, we pay our taxes, so please listen to us and help us.
Y yo, este, he sido una buena ciudadana desde que he llegado a los Estados Unidos, yo siempre he trabajado, entonces por eso pido que por favor nos congelen la renta.
I've always been a good worker since I've come to the United States, always working, I ask you to please help us by freezing the rent hike.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good afternoon, pickle dick, everybody, pickle dick.
Mi nombre es Martha Zapata, gracias por hacernos escuchar el pueblo. Queremos, hay una extensión de seis meses de la congelación de la renta porque somos personas que trabajamos muy duro para pagar una renta.
Hi, my name is Martha Zapata. Thank you for listening to your constituents here today and what we ask for is please for you to freeze this rent hike. We work so hard just to pay for the rent that we pay now.
Sí, eh, el problema, yo llevo un apartamento cuarenta años, en treinta y dos años viví en un apartamento pequeño, me pasó a uno grande, me dijo que hace un descuento de trescientos dólares, lo hizo por dos años y después de cinco años se quedó callado, trató de sacarme y me hizo la vida imposible. Y esto no lo hace un solo dueño.
Una pausa.
Una pausa. Okay.
I lived in an apartment for thirty-two years, a small apartment, then I had to move into a large apartment, I made a deal with the owner where he would discount three hundred dollars. He did it for like a couple of years, but then after five years, he stopped doing the discount, so the prices have gone up.
Y esto no lo hace un solo dueño, lo hacen muchos cuando una persona, tenemos mucho tiempo en un apartamento, tratan de sacarnos, de acosarnos y de hacernos la vida imposible, por eso...
It's not just this landlord that's doing this, landlords do it to all tenants, they try to make their life impossible when they've been living there for too long because they're not collecting enough.
Por eso queremos la extensión de los seis meses y queremos que siempre nos escuchen porque cuando estamos acá es porque tenemos un problema serio y porque tenemos problemas de acoso, tenemos problemas que de ellos hacia nosotros, me prohibieron hablar con, me prohibieron hablar con la compañía, me prohibieron hablar con el dueño, o sea, yo estoy sola con ustedes.
Six-month extension and when we come here to speak to you, it's always because we have a serious problem, you know, I'm having harassment, they forbid me to come and talk to anyone and I have harassment problems from the owner. That's why we come to you, we have these problems.
Y, y por favor concejales, pónganse la mano en corazón y tomen la extensión de los seis meses. Muchas gracias.
Put your hand over your hearts and consider our six-month freeze, rent freeze extension. Thank you, councilors.
Good morning.
Hi, Dr. D, uh, twenty-four.
Nice mask.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, so I thank Councilwoman Hernandez for putting this, um, twenty-four before you, um, putting it off another week, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but, you know, we still are in a state of emergency, right? Do you people understand what a state of emergency means? It means you put everything aside and focus on that. We are in a state of emergency regarding houselessness in this city. We have people who are daily becoming houseless. If you increase rents on people at seven percent, God, that's a huge amount for most people. You're gonna have more and more houseless people. You are smart enough, maybe you're not, but I, I, I hope you are, smart enough to figure out ways that you could accommodate those landlords who will go under if this happens, but I doubt that they will. My dad was a landlord, he had very low rents and he never went under.
I'm sure. I'm sure your dad was the trailblazer. Get out of here. Sit your maskhole ass down.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Eh, buenos días, mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza, eh, soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el Distrito Nueve.
Good morning.
Quiero ser un comentario público.
Sofia Mendoza, member of ACE, I live in District Nine, I've come to give a general public comment.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Un minuto para su comentario general.
Estoy con Keep L.A. House. Estoy aquí para exigirle que apruebe la moción...
Well, I'm with here with Keep L.A. House and I'm here demanding that you approve this motion.
De una, de una extensión de seis meses de congelamiento de alquiler.
The six-month extension on the rent freeze.
Eh, mire, la inflación no está pegado a todos, no nada más a los dueños.
Is that Steven Spielberg?
You can see inflation hits us all, not just the property owners.
Sí, entonces yo les pido que por favor tomen conciencia de que un congelamiento de renta para nosotros, los inquilinos, sí, es bueno.
I'd like you to be conscious that a rent freeze for the tenants of this area is a good thing.
Porque hay mucha gente en la calle y entonces si ustedes no nos apoyan en esto, ah, va a haber más gente en la calle.
You see, there's so many people already in the streets, if you don't support us with this, there'll even be more.
Porque no vamos a alcanzar a pagar, ah, un aumento de renta.
Because people cannot afford this increase.
Sí, entonces por favor tomen conciencia de esto.
So please be conscious of this. Thank you so much.
Connie Acosta, Agüive Toscano, Julia Orzoko, Larry Larson, Scott G., and Shmuel Raigdorsky.
Scott G., where the fuck's Johnny G. at? I need some Johnny G. in my life. Tell me about those dangerous light poles people are walking into.
Item twenty-four and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Um, I'm here, uh, I'm a tenant organizer from Community Power Collective, um, I'm here to, um, uh, demand that you all vote to extend the rent freeze. Um, the rent freeze has mean, has meant that, um, thousands of working-class families in Los Angeles, especially in Boyle Heights in northeast LA where I organize, has, have been able to achieve a small degree of economic stability. Uh, introducing any sort of rent increase at this point would destroy, um, would, would, would disrupt that economic stability for these working-class families. Uh, any sort of rent, uh, increase, um, uh, on these rent-controlled tenants will translate into more homelessness and we've seen how the city deals with homelessness, the city is not friendly to homelessness, to, to unhoused people, including its unhoused veterans. By the way, Los, Los Angeles is, has the highest amount of unhoused veterans in the country, so that...
And I bet on everything that I have in my pocket, which isn't much, that you voted for people like them or them. Said I want to hear your about homeless veteran bullshit. Okay?
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Maybe it'll change, maybe it won't.
Scott G., item twenty-four.
At this point, what chance, what choice do you have?
And you ask yourselves, why is the LA rental system so broken?
Oh, under or over, guys, under or over, twenty-five.
RSO lowest market rate for a one-bedroom is seventeen forty-seven. Let's start with someone making fifteen dollars an hour, subtract a third in taxes, that means actually ten dollars an hour. Forty hours a week is four hundred times four months equals sixteen hundred. Well, that doesn't work. Learn the math. Okay, well, let's say I'm a single tenant who's been living in RSO rental for ten years and my rent is a thousand dollars a month, if I'm lucky. Then you add in monthly utilities, DWP, gas, let's say a modest hundred and fifty, plus internet and cable, another hundred, then you have mineral gas for the car, another hundred, and you have a hundred-dollar car insurance, leaving only a hundred and fifty left for food, which might last you a week. No wiggle room for a parking traffic ticket, clothes, shoes, any gifts, no savings for another rainy day, another rainy day, possibly another pandemic or being sick. Oh wait, I guess that means people like me shouldn't be able to afford quality health and dental insurance. Even at eighteen, twenty dollars an hour, backbreaking labor, the math still doesn't work. So you sit here, you blame homelessness on us? Who do you serve? Are you a representative of your community?
Speaker, your time has expired.
Or are you...
Speaker, your time has expired, we need you to vacate the podium so we can move on to the next speaker.
They don't give a fuck. They don't care, they want you on the street. They're just gonna pretend like they don't want you on the street while they are just celebrating that you are on the street and they're doing it every angle to snuff you out.
Remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Everything. Wake up.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
I'm a housing provider, a proud housing provider. I want you to know that some of these renters are being paid twenty dollars an hour to be here by someone that's organized.
Huh.
We've suffered four years with no rent increases but tremendous expenses. Our insurance company raised our rate a hundred and eighty-four percent. A year ago, this council promised us the freeze would be over. Everybody else has higher prices except for landlords with RSO units. Yesterday, a bottle or, or a can of paint at Home Depot cost fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Four years ago would have been twenty-two dollars as an example of rising costs.
Thanks, dumb fuck Joe.
The freeze must end, landlords must receive a reasonable rent. Thank you.
Thanks, dumb fuck Joe.
That, that's your time, sir.
That's your time, we don't give a fuck about you. Skedaddle on, sir.
Please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
I'm Connie Acosta, RSO property admin for twenty years. To keep low-income renters housed and prevent evictions by reducing sellouts to outside investors, I asked council to amend item twenty-four back to seven percent. Reasons for this housing predicament are, first, most of the LA city's pandemic aid was supported by revenue that came from building and safety's demolition of hundreds of RSO habitable properties. Second, the LA County Housing Authority is starting to displace hundreds of its low-income tenants in phases for redevelopment. Thirdly, thirty-year affordable housing covenants with LA Housing are starting to expire and will displace hundreds of low-income residents. RSO mom and pop properties are not the culprits. Keep the seven percent increase so we can keep our low-income renters housed. Thank you.
Got a sun hat on, his Black Lives Matter shirt, his sweet new mask, he's fucking ready for the world. He's gonna give us twenty-two ums.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Ogilvy Toscano y soy del miembro de la organización Sage.
Hi, good morning, I'm Ogilvio Toscano, a member of the Sage organization.
Mi comentario es público general acerca del asunto veinticuatro.
I'd like to give a general public comment on issue number twenty-four.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Un minuto, por favor.
Estoy aquí para pedirles, por favor, que aprueben esta moción de extensión de congelamiento de rentas.
I'm here to ask you please to approve the extension on the freeze of rent freeze.
Called thirty-three, well over, huh?
Y también para ver la manera de evitar que se, que se aprueben esos aumentos tan excesivos del siete al nueve por ciento.
And please look for a way to avoid these excessive increases at seven to nine percent even.
Se han puesto ustedes a pensar el gran impacto que va a tener esto si es que se aprueba. Nuestra comunidad no va a soportar todo eso porque nuestra comunidad va al día, no, no podemos pagar un aumento excesivo de renta.
You should consider the great impact that this will have on the community, the community's living day to day now and they can't absorb such a great increase in rent.
Por una parte, si eso pasa, ustedes están quitándole una carga a los dueños, ¿verdad? Okay, eso, eso se aprueba y ellos ya se liberan de esa carga, pero entonces esa carga va a pasar a la comunidad y ustedes creen que nuestra comunidad va a soportar esos aumentos excesivos.
See, you're relieving the landlords of the burden, of economic burden, but you're passing the burden on to the tenants and they're excessive. So what do you think is gonna happen to the rest of the community? We're absorbing it.
Lo que realmente va a pasar es de que va a haber, este, desalojos masivos y, y por ende va a haber más, este, indigencia en la calle.
What really will happen is there'll be mass evictions and a lot of homelessness and indigent people on the streets.
And it's a push, Ian.
Yo pregunto a cada, a cada concejal de, de esta ciudad, ¿ya se resolvió el problema de la indigencia?
So I'm asking you, councilors, have you resolved this homelessness problem in the city?
¿Qué es lo que van a hacer?
Speaker, your time has expired.
Gracias.
He's coming up right now, guys. Under or over twenty-five, remember. Oh yeah, it's coming in hot.
Item thirty-two and general comment.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Yes, the same thing it says on this kiosk. Um, item thirty-two is personal services for Monica Rodriguez that have already started. It seems like you should have funded that ahead of time. Um, it's for goodness sake strategies. Um, she makes a lot of sense, Monica, because, you know, common statement we say is, about our stuff is, for goodness sake, what the fuck is wrong with you? Um, it's for communication services, um, a PR, PR strategist, um...
Um, it's for communication services, um, a PR, PR strategist, um, because, you know, Monica needs a lot of that, since a lot of her, um, recent stuff have included making statements calling people assaulted by known racists a terrorist. Um, other, other interesting stuff. So now she's get a PR, getting this PR firm to, um, spin her little stuff and try to make her not look as bad since she doesn't, when she does it herself, that's, you know.
General public comment?
All right, general comment. Um, so yeah, um, why are you raising the rent? Um, why are you trying to raise the rent, um, in a state of emergency on homelessness? Um, the very first thing you should do in a state of emergency on homeless is stop raising the rent. Um, you should, you know, have an eviction moratorium. I mean, it seems like if you have, if you got to the point where there's so much homelessness that you need a state, declared state of emergency, maybe you should be doing everything in your power to not make it so that more people are now unhoused. Maybe you should be making it so that it's harder to evict people. Um, it's harder for people to become unhoused in the first place. Um, so you have a state of emergency. Why are you trying to have more homelessness? Um, in a state of emergency on homelessness. KDL needs to go, stop voting for his motions. And we'll see upstairs, John.
Dang, I was too off, so under twenty, I mean, twen- twenty was the number, under twenty-five wins. I said twenty-two. Dang.
Josh Looks, Michael Drendel, Charles Ju, and Paul Steele.
I was almost right on the money.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items that you would like to speak on?
Bro sounds so stupid. Of course he is, he's got a Black Lives Matter shirt on.
Yes, good morning.
Fucking puppet.
I didn't hear my name, but I guess you called it.
He's what you call a useful idiot.
Yeah, hi, I'm Domingo Soler Sane, a member of ACE. I'm here with ACE and Keep L.A. Housed.
Por favor, vengo aquí a, a pedirles que extiendan la, la noción de los seis meses de la renta, por favor, porque, ah, yo soy, este, una familia de bajos recursos y soy ama de casa y me está impactando al escuchar que le van a subir muchísimo a la renta.
I, I'd like to ask you to please extend the six-month freeze on the rent hike because I'm a single mother.
He's done, son.
Living, working with very low wages.
Sí, solo mi esposo trabaja y me impacta mirar cuánta gente hay en la calle y, y tengo mucho, mucho temor y de yo quedarme en la calle uno más con mis hijos. Por favor, se les pide, por favor.
And now only my husband is working, so I see a lot of people in the streets and I'm very afraid to end up in the street with my kids. I ask you to please support.
Y no, y somos personas de que no es que estemos pidiendo todo gratis, sino que somos personas trabajadoras y a eso venimos a, a, a buscar cómo, cómo sobrevivir y mantener nuestra familia juntos, por favor.
And we don't ask for anything for free. We're hard-working people and we're paying, paying for our way. We're hard workers and we just ask for some support for our families, please.
Por favor, voltemos a mirar un poco como personas trabajadoras que somos.
Please, consider us. We're hard-working people. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Look, my name is Paul Steele, and I'm here for, uh, speaking on twenty-four for that one minute.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Honorable council members.
Honorable.
I ask you to defeat measure twenty-four and allow the reasonable seven percent increase planned for February. We property owners had an undeniably large increase in costs since 2019, which was the last year rent increase was allowed. The state reasonably passed a ten percent increase after the three-year freeze. The people I hire, plumbers, handymen, painters, roofers, all now require double to triple charges over what were my costs pre-COVID. But my income is frozen. Jose, who maintains our yard, his pay comes from my frozen income. He needs a pay increase. Do I tell him, "No, City Hall is not interested in your pay"? I ask that you defeat this measure, allow the reasonable seven percent increase already planned for February, and get Jose a raise. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, uh, Nati Casanova. I live in CD fourteen, and I would like to speak in support of the rodeo ordinance.
Stumbling on about the fucking rodeo.
Thank you. Uh, I've been up here several times. I am a first-generation Latinx American. I grew up in Texas, a lot of rodeos there. Um, they're, it's just inherently cool. You look at it, they're blatantly instilling fear and pain into animals. This shouldn't be a sport anymore. We're actually behind several other places in the world, and in this country, even, even in this state, on banning rodeos. Um, the downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council voted and submitted a CIS, a community impact statement, to say, "Hey, we support this rodeo ban ordinance." And that's now the second community, uh, neighborhood council in CD fourteen that has said that. Um, we, I mean, you know, downtown, I live downtown, we're pretty much the only community directly affected by a rodeo event. And as I had submitted before, research showing a correlation between that rodeo event and a significant increase in violence. Violence towards animals begets violence towards humans. We should try to build a kinder community in future, so please support the rodeo ban.
She's first-gen Latinx. Don't forget about that, the first generation. She's the OG, the veterano.
Andrew, uh, Gravener.
Andrew Gravener just spoke, idiot.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Can you speak again?
Leon Henke, general public comment.
Uh-oh, you're gonna die. Why'd you take your mask off?
Honor all veterans in Los Angeles by keeping the rent freeze. Honor all veterans of U.S. wars, living or dead, by opposing rising U.S. militarism. Honor the literally millions of civilians who have died as a result of U.S. wars and U.S.-supported wars. From Hiroshima to Korea to Vietnam to Iraq and Afghanistan and Gaza this day. Honor children who were here earlier today by as electeds opposing U.S. wars. Money for housing and social services, not for war, not for massacres of civilians. Thank you.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Of course. I live in District One. My name is Heather Wilson, and I'm speaking in support of the rodeo ordinance.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, council members.
Or Nagasaki, other than the...
And all of our veterans, thank you for your service. Over fifty years ago,
No boots on the ground, I don't believe.
Author Gerald Carson, a regular contributor to the American Heritage Journal, wrote, "Rodeos are simply cruelty packaged as Americana and our modern recreational equivalent of the public hanging." He goes on to say that "The rodeo hinges on the violent subjugation of living animals deliberately inflicted to frenzied violence." W.K. Stratton, author of Chasing the Rodeo, pens a more nostalgic view of it, but even this pro-rodeo writer states, "Without question, rodeo exploits animals for the entertainment of humans, causing injury and death to hundreds of horses and cattle each year." Please, let's make L.A. a more progressive and humane city. Each of you have the power to do so simply by voting yes on this rodeo ordinance. Thank you for your time.
You're progressive socialist. You know, everything progressive turns to shit. Case in point. Oh, man, commies.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
My name is Flor Ramos, and I'm here to support the council member Bloomingfield's rodeo ordinance.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Must have brought it back on the agenda.
My family is from the city of Jerez, Zacatecas, and I am a first-generation Mexican-American. Growing up, my parents believed it was their job to teach me kindness and to protect me from environments where violence took place, which is why they attempted to keep me away from ever attending a rodeo. Despite their efforts, other family members took me to a calf roping event. I will never forget the terrified faces of the innocent calves who were being dragged along the ground. Um, as the crowd cheered, I pulled on the arm of a family member who took me. I asked why they were hurting the animals. I did not get, receive a justifiable answer. I was broken and scared. I now thank my parents for not supporting this, and I am asking you to also not support the rodeo ord, to support the rodeo ordinance when it comes to a vote. Thank you.
Yeah, they wanna, Robert, they wanna ban rodeos within the city, uh, limits.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Elvia Sedano, general public comment.
I'll go to San Bernardino County or Ventura County or Riverside County.
For nearly twenty years, Castleton Horse Rescue in Lancaster, California, has been providing horses with sanctuary. They submitted a letter of support which has been uploaded to the council file twenty-dash-fifteen-seventy-five. Here is an excerpt from their letter. "We write to you today to voice our complete support of council member Bloomingfield Rodeo Ordinance. We have had many years of firsthand experience of the horrendous injuries suffered by many horses which are forced to take part in the so-called sport of rodeo. Many of these horses, when they can no longer please the rodeo cowboys due to injuries sustained by them, are sent to auction where they are, will most likely be purchased by killer buyers before the poor animals are shipped south of the border for the most horrific end to their life. We urge you to pass this ordinance and be the voice of compassion for the so many at-risk horses. Thank you so much."
Good afternoon. If you can please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
My name is Megan Kelly. I live in Council District Fourteen.
Megan Kelly, isn't that the chick from Fox?
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
On September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Government Liaison Committee of Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council voted in favor of asking a full Board of Directors for a community impact statement to support Council Member Bloomingfield's rodeo ordinance. Two weeks later, on October tenth, the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Board of Directors voted overwhelmingly in favor of submitting a community impact statement. Eleven voted yes, two abstained, and not a single board member voted no. This document has been uploaded to the City Council file, along with unanimous support from the Los Angeles Animal Services Commissioners. Please support this ordinance when it comes before you, just as the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council and the Los Angeles Animal Service Commissioners have done. Thank you, and thank you to our veterans, too.
Ian Janison, general public comment?
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Ms. Park, uh, you have authored a motion to end the vaccine mandate. However, it, uh, Mr. McCosker, who is Chair of the Personal Audits and Hiring Committee's office, has stated that it's his intention not to, uh, vote on the motion until after Thanksgiving. That is unacceptable because LAFD firefighter John Knox is due to have his Board of Rights, uh, hearing resumed tomorrow and to be wrapped up in a week, which will likely result in his termination. We also need you to speak in favor of his constitutional rights and for all Board of Rights proceedings to end. Mr. McCosker, as Chair of the Personal Audits and Hiring Committee, we need you to agendize this motion to end the vaccine mandate, uh, immediately for the next meeting, not after Thanksgiving now. Um, end the fucking mandate, not two or three months from now, now. Thank you.
Look at that, only one, um, smart dude, well-spoken. And look, I just told you, they're still doing this mandate shit now. They're still firing motherfuckers now. This shit been gone. You see what I'm saying? And they don't, none of these people fucking address that. He did.
My name is David Cheney.
Big ups to him.
And I'm here to do general comment, mostly about one-minute, top twenty-four, but, I mean, item twenty-four.
I think it's a Bernie spoof shirt. I can't read it.
I wanted to address you specifically because my, my uncle died.
Probably says bullshit instead of Bernie or something. Who knows?
In captivity, he starved to death, and so I, uh, I feel that, that my family has done a lot for this country, and we've done a lot for Korea. But I, what I'm trying to understand is why my uncle died so that I can now, I just lost a building of twenty years that I had because, um, Eunice and Mr. Hugo Martin, Soro Martinez decide that I'm just not supposed to make any money. I mean, I had a tenant who didn't pay me rent for three years and bought a house in Texas. I have two tenants paying seven hundred dollars a month. I had three years where I was basically living on nothing. I haven't had any money for so long. I had to borrow money. And I would like to see, I think the seven percent increase is only fair. I was here in two thousand nine for the three percent increase when you tried to rescind it, and it was, it was kept. So please, help us.
Bro, you don't raise the rent, you don't properly do it anyways. Nobody should be at seven hundred bucks, not even close. Get the fuck out of here.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, ambulance chaser, all fucking items in general public comment.
We have three minutes for the items, up to one minute per item. That's, uh, items twenty-six, two-thirty-two, and one minute for general public comment.
Yes. So we'll start with Moni Cow. Moo. Yes, she won a consultant contract to try to rehabilitate her terrible image. Yes, and it's no surprise. Last night we heard from the Neighborhood Council, the Foothill Trails, and whatever the fuck the other one is, Sunland Talk.
What topic are you on? What item are you on?
Uh, uh, nigger, I'm on item thirty-two, and that's why I'm talking about image consultant on thirty-two. That Monica Conrigus has a very bad image when it comes to her district. And that's why she has to use taxpayer dollars to hire, for goodness' sake, strategies. For goodness' sake, why doesn't Monica just resign? For goodness' sake, why doesn't Monica use her married name, Fontanaz? For goodness' sake.
You're not on the topic.
But for goodness' sake, can I speak on that fucking item, for goodness' sake? My God, that's what it's called. I'm only following the rules. Now we get to item nine, the indicted felon suspect on twenty-nine. Giving and removing the properties. Yes, yes, the, the rent escrow. You must get to the CD-nine representative before he's arrested and has to begin serving his prison sentence. Yes, look at him sweating right now, rubbing his eyes.
Final warning, you need to stay on topic about the...
Yes, I'm trying, you cocksucker. I'm on item twenty-nine. It's dealing with CD-nine with a felony suspect over there that represents a district. And that's what we're doing. If you stop interrupting me, then I can get on there. That's what Kevin mentioned to me the other day. I'm just trying to follow the rules.
So Mr. Spinning, I've been warned and moving you to general public comment.
You're done, oh.
You're gonna rob my fucking time again? Okay, no puppet, let's get serious here. I'm gonna dance right now, right? I got fucking kicked out for dancing, right? And that schmuck doesn't show up today, right? Bob, what's his name, Bloobin Bled? But you know, I come here to this fucking meeting, I sign up first, I get called fucking last. What the fuck's that? And then we gotta sit here, I'm talking on the fucking item, city attorney scumbag, and you fucking interrupt me and you violate my civil rights. And that's why I'm calling on Kevin DeLeon to make a motion to throw this fuck out of here and to fucking bring Armando Herman back. You gotta ban him six fucking days because you got that little fucking personality, that little bitch. That's that little marquisy bitch. Because you know the FBI's looking into your shit, your weez are two-point-oh. But let's not forget, yesterday was your birthday. Happy birthday, nigger! Wow.
All right, with that, we're going to go to telephonic.
Guys.
Public testimony.
Wow, I mean, I didn't, and they, dude, they threw out Mr. Herman for six days.
Please state your name and what items you'd like to speak on.
Hold on, I'm changing.
Caller, press star six to unmute.
There we go. Yeah, man, he went off, dude. I told you he was gonna go crazy.
Hi, good morning, uh, council.
He got thrown out.
I'm calling to speak on, actually, I'm just gonna give public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, uh, public comment is homeless numbers have increased by over ten percent due to the sleazy council incompetence and corruption. Corrupt counts, you are going in the wrong direction. So when, why are we nearly fifty percent of the homeless incarcerated and unemployed? And I'm speaking of black people. Black women are four point three percent of the population, twenty-five percent of all female violence, thirty-three percent of female homicides, thirty-six percent of... violence, thirty-three percent of female homicides, thirty-six percent of female assaults, and twenty-two percent of all rapes. Why? Because we have self-serving and corrupt Negroes like Marquise Dawson, indicted Price, Hut, and Ridley Thomas, who only represent themselves, and we are all paying billions for it. The black community has no representation and we are all paying for it. Recall corrupt sleazy Marquise Dawson, suspend criminally indicted Kern Price, and suspend Heather Hut and picked by Martinez, Sadio, and Cricorian.
Yeah, K Crew, you should try using that Brave browser that everybody was saying. They say it works. Works well, it's free.
Testing, okay. Caller ending.
Oh, that's lobster, I think.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, hi, DanielGus.substack.com. All items and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, that's up to one minute per item for items twenty-six through thirty-two, and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Substack.
Well, yeah, i- isn't thirty-four on the agenda? Thirty-four's on the agenda, right? I'm gonna use part of my, uh, uh, three minutes to comment on item number thirty.
Items for which public hearing has already been held.
Daniel Gus.
Not the settlement, though, not the settlement.
If you would like to speak to that during your general public comment, you may, but please stick to items twenty-six through thirty-two.
Okay, great. Um, on the RSO issue, um, you know, the RSO issue is bad enough.
Issue is not open for public comment. You can speak to it during general, um, but for now, if you want to speak to the items, please speak to items twenty-six through thirty-two.
Um, okay, then I'll tell you what, uh, let me take a quick look here. I will get out of your way very quickly. Um, yeah, you know, the issue with Monica Rodriguez and that, um, personal services contract, um, it is disconcerting because who actually is this consulting company? Why does the public have to look this up in ways that some of the city hall commentators and I need to find out? But why doesn't the agenda disclose who's actually, who's actually behind this personal services contract? And, and why is the city spending money on public relations rehabilitation rather than fixing the problems themselves? This is quadruped. You could use that money to so many other things rather than a personal services contract to somebody's husband, somebody's daughter-in-law, a- a- and, 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 and the fact that this is needed shows that better, um, leadership needs to be done. You don't need rehab, uh, for your reputation, Miss Rodriguez, or your district if you just do a job that is blatantly evident to everybody that you're doing such a fine job.
Gus, you've used your one minute on item thirty-two. I'm gonna ask that you move on to one of the other items, please.
Mr. Gus.
Well, no, general public comment is last.
If, if you'd like to move to general public comment, you may.
Okay, great, I'm gonna do that, thank you. Um, general public comment, hey, City Council, you just approved without a word of public debate today one point eight million dollars for sexual harassment in the LAPD. Matt Garza thing. So the next time you talk about sexual harassment of any sort, remember you haven't taken any measures to stop this again. Sign me up. I will, for free, for a dollar a year, I'll do a hotline so that anybody who has a legitimate complaint can contact me and I'll make sure it's known. So you don't squander one point eight million dollars on another one of these things. As, uh, as for the RSO issue, you know, RSO is just part of LA. There are people in buildings that are forty years old in Los Angeles that aren't being protected by RSO, that aren't being protected by rent control, and this is just a small, not a small, the RSO issue is a big issue for renters in the city. But it's even bigger than that for people who aren't protected by RSO. Hugo, I commend you for trying to, to do something about this, but the problem is far, far bigger than RSO.
Dicks are there first, wouldn't you figure it?
Caller ending in, uh, two-six-one-six, what items would you like to speak on?
Wouldn't you just know it?
Caller with the phone number ending in two-six-one-six, please press star six to unmute. This is your last opportunity to speak or unfortunately we're going to have to move on to the next caller. Next caller?
Caller ending in seven-two.
Yes.
I'm here.
Okay, we.
Eric Previn.
So, Mr. Previn, which items would you like to speak on?
Yeah, that was very fishy, by the way. I'd like to speak on the available items as well as the general public comment. And let me be very clear. I want to speak on item thirty-four. That's the item that I want to speak on.
So item thirty-four is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. But you have three minutes for the items twenty-six, Mr. Previn, you have three minutes for the items number twenty-six through thirty-two.
No, I'm not gonna speak on the items. I only wanna speak on thirty-four.
Please begin with the items.
I only wanna speak on thirty-four. I only wanna speak on thirty-four.
Okay, then you have one minute for general public comment.
That's a violation of the Brown Act, so I'll explain why. Because when you introduce the one point eight million, there was no opportunity for the public to give a comment, and that is new information. That isn't a, that is a different, that was not posted for the public to examine. And what we would say is what a shame. And, you know, Matt Garza was a cop, he worked on the detail for the mayor. Mayor Garcia knew Rick J. Brooks was grabbing his ass and everybody else's. It was appalling. They were paying millions of dollars to peace over violence for consulting on sexual harassment in the office. And yet the city fought for years against this cop who came clean and said, I can't handle it anymore. And now we're spending one point eight million and not one of you citizens.
Come on, man.
And we spent one point eight million in settlements, but we spent probably eight million in private attorneys protecting the mayor. So this is a great shame, and I'd like to see, uh, the Brown Act examined closely as to disclosing huge settlements without public comment afforded at that time. So we'll do a little, uh, note to the clerk.
Mr. Previn, your time has expired.
Caller ending in seven-two-five-five, please state your name and what items you'd like to speak on.
Everybody else. Cause they're always late. Why they always first?
Um, twenty-four?
Is that Fifty Guns?
So item number twenty-four. Alright, so item number twenty-four is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, I know there's a chase right now. I'm waiting for someone.
Well, I think more than just, uh, recluse, so I think there should be no City Council president or councilperson elected to City Council that has that kind of power over the other people in that chamber. If they are landlords, if they own apartment vill- LLCs, you have too much power and too much interest in raising that rent, seven percent. What happened to, uh, proposition thirteen? Two percent. The first increase should be at two percent if you're gonna make one. I don't care if there's been three years back, you don't go back and re-contract somebody and give them the full bloom twenty percent that they were re-contracted for. It should only be two percent increase if you're gonna increase anything. Veterans, love you guys, support you guys, always will. Have a blessed day.
Thank you so much. That was our last caller and concludes public comment for, uh, today's, uh, meeting. Mr. Clerk, what is available for the council to decide at this moment?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items twenty-six through thirty-two.
Come on, man.
All right, items twenty-six through thirty-two, those items are, uh, before us. Let's open the roll.
Hold on a second.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now vote on item eighteen, called special by Councilmember Rahman for a separate vote.
All right, if, uh, there are no comments from Councilmember Rahman, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes, one no.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item one, called special by Councilmember Hernandez for comments.
All right, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this motion outlining what is needed for a language justice plan for city councils is an exciting step forward in creating a more accessible city. Under the last mayoral administration, executive director, executive directive number thirty-two called on all city departments to create language access plans. A- an important step in making the city more, more accessible to the majority of residents who speak a language other than English at home. However, the city council is one of the most public-facing entities and was not included in the directive to create a plan. The motion before us, seconded by my colleagues Councilwoman Rodriguez and Padilla, will get necessary plans in place to ensure that the city council is accessible to all Angelenos regardless of the language they speak. There are over two hundred languages spoken in Los Angeles, and over half of Angelenos over the age of five speak a language other than English at, English at home. Truly centering language justice requires that we acknowledge this incredible diversity and ensure that City Hall truly reflects the trapestry of language and culture that makes up LA. This step is long overdue. Our residents shouldn't have to struggle to access services or weigh in on city policies simply because of the language they speak. I hope that you will join me and, uh, my colleagues, Councilmember Padilla and Rodriguez in voting yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item ten, called special by Councilmember Rahman for comments.
Councilmember Rahman.
Thank you so much for allowing me a chance to speak about this, which is about AB six forty-five and its local implementation here, uh, which is a speed safety pilot program that will use automatic speed enforcement devices. I am excited about this. I think that the introduction of a speed camera system may actually end up being one of the most impactful things that our city can do in the near term to reduce speeding and crashes and resulting deaths from crashes, which have been rising in the city of Los Angeles. Studies have stone, shown large reductions in speeding and injury, uh, when they've used these devices. Uh, reductions in Montgomery County, uh, Maryland, uh, by sixty-two percent. Crashes resulting in fatalities or serious injuries reduced by nineteen percent. In New York City, when this was implemented, speeding was reduced by seventy-three percent. That is remarkable change. So I don't think it's something that we can just put into the system and walk away from. We have to be working to think about what are the engineering improvements that go alongside it? We have to make sure that it's being implemented in a way that supports all of our efforts towards greater equity. But I also do think that this might be one of the most impactful things that we can do here to save lives on our city streets, and I am excited about it. So I hope that you'll all join me in voting yes on this item and look forward to working with all of you to get this implemented as soon as possible. Thank you.
How far are they, fuck?
Thank you so much. All right, that item is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll.
Running now? Fourteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
Yup, shit.
The council may not consider item twenty-five, called special by Councilmember Park for remarks.
Yeah, just my luck.
Damn it.
Thank you, Council President. Um, colleagues, Los Angeles has always been a leader in innovation, welcoming and exploring new technology that help us better represent and serve our constituents. But it is also true here in the city of Los Angeles that when new technology arrives, we are often caught flat-footed, having to react instead of proactively addressing potential impacts. Over the last decade, we've experienced and responded to many challenges like the app-based economy, ride-sharing, short-term rentals, and food delivery. And now with the advent of AI and more advanced technologies.
I just don't get it. I just don't.
Dynamic with autonomous vehicles. But unlike the advent of app-based technologies, we know the challenge the AVs present.
While the others are actually have to get up, get up and launch.
San Francisco to learn some lessons. Their autonomous vehicles have eroded public safety, actively disrupting and hindering emergency responders from performing their duties, obstructing public works projects, failing to see crossing guards, and tragically dragging a pedestrian following a hit-and-run by a human driver. Just yesterday, in fact, media reports revealed that one company tested its vehicles on city streets while knowing that their vehicles may not recognize or exercise caution around children crossing the street. Our safety as a city is non-negotiable and it should not come at the expense of profit, private gain, or bottom lines. We also need to assess the impacts that these technologies will have on our workforce. It's imperative to analyze how these vehicles are utilizing our public rights of way, how testing data could influence our policymaking, and what a common sense regulatory framework for this technology could look like in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank Councilwoman Hut for acting with urgency and scheduling this motion, which complements the one introduced by Councilmember Soto Martinez in addition to Mayor Bass's advocacy around this issue. I know that by working together as a city, we can put ourselves back in the driver's seat. I urge an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Park, that item is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting referral.
They are posted and referred?
The test is clear, Mr. President.
Excellent. Members, are there announcements? Announcements, members? Announcements, members? Ms. Hernandez, announcements? Okay, all right, seeing no announcements, I'll ask everybody in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions.
You better rise up.
Uh, any adjourning motions to my right? All right, adjourning motions to my left.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. Uh, colleagues, I would like to adjourn the meeting today in honor of Irving Alvarez. Irving Alvarez was a leader, organizer, mentor, and a friend to many people. Even in his short life, Irving's impact in advocacy space was immense, especially advocating for youth justice, youth diversion, second chances for young people. Um, he himself had been impacted by the carceral system and since coming home has dedicated his life for years to working with, uh, organizations in California and Los Angeles, uh, such as the Youth Justice Coalition, uh, Brother and Sons, um, to give back to helping young people. He supported campaign efforts to end school-to-prison pipelines, probation oversight, youth development, and pushed for ballot measures that would invest in our underserved communities. As a formerly incarcerated young person, Irvin knew firsthand what it was like to navigate the carceral system and dedicated his life to the healing and justice work, particularly, uh, doing that with our young, our, our youth of our city. Irvin joined, um, Youth Justice Coalition LA through their Welcome Home LA Program and eventually enrolled in the Youth Bill Charter School of California to get his degree. And then became a YJC, uh, youth organizer, heading to the front lines of campaigns on issues affecting our youth and prison-impacted communities. Just earlier this year, he was hired to co-lead the Brother-Son Self's Coalition's First Youth Justice Fellowship to speak into other, to speak with other young men about their lives, about the experiences that they have all faced, um, that were very similar, um, and that came from the challenges of, by being impacted with the carceral system. I had the privilege of knowing Irving, um, and seeing his heart for this work. I really sad to see such a young, trailblazing leader like him leave us so soon. He was just a kind individual, hardworking, uh, gregarious, just he was just always good to be around. And I remember, you know, having the privilege of working alongside him many of the campaigns like Measure J and others, especially, uh, at the Youth Justice Coalition, um, Chico's Justice Center location, if y'all haven't visited, you should, but, you know, Irving dedicated all of his time since he came home to giving it back to young people. And so may Irving rest in the warm embrace of our ancestors and his, and may his community advocacy live on in many of the organizations, coalitions, and spaces he impacted. Um, sending lots of love to the Youth Justice Coalition family, the Brother-Son Self's family. Um, we lost a, a good one with Irving. Thank you, Council President.
All right, any others? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Have a happy Veterans Day, everyone.
Wait, today ain't Veterans Day. I don't understand it. Like, cuckoo, or? Well, don't answer that. Yeah. Yeah, it's going off in Madrid again. In España. In España. And you never know, one may spawn another. He was driving pretty, uh, crazy. He was driving pretty, uh, crazy on the freeway. Unfortunately, guys, I can't use those other channels unless you wanna risk me paying millions of dollars and then me losing the show completely. If you think that one particular chase is worth it, let me know. Cause I will be putting up a GoFundMe. I must've got at least five or six. Oh, I love your cat. For Halloween, open the door, and he'd be there standing behind me. There you go. That's awesome. Dress like Carmen Sandiego. She can. No, no, I'm here. Chase is going again. Finished a few minutes ago. I got out and ran apparently, I didn't see him exit the car, I did see him running and then him getting the dog pile from CHP. Oh, classic loaf. Alright guys, let's get this last bag in. What happened, man? No, this is not CNN, this is Debatea, I think it's Debatea? Debatea? Something like that? No, sorry, Director. El Debateo. El Debate, the Debate. Hi, Terry. You didn't miss much, Terry. Just Mr. Spindler going off, cause he was kicked out last week, and apparently we found out for him, Mr. Herman got kicked out for six days for yelling like he did when he got kicked out, they kicked him out and he went outside and started yelling. Yeah. Well, you know, you really didn't miss much. Let's do this. Alright guys, so I, I'm outta here for now, uh, one may spawn another, I'll be around, I got stuff to do, so if, if a chase pops on, a channel we can use, I'm ready to go. Um, other than that, I guess that's it. Hopefully you guys have a fantastic Wednesday, hopefully you guys can join us for both shows on Friday. Um, and I think that's it. So on behalf of old Loaf over there, Stink Bombs wherever he's at, and myself, I'm outta here for now, but, uh, I'll see you guys on the next one. Hasta la vista, baby.
See you, guys, everything.